Good evening. I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 7:07 PM. All members of the council are present, and I would ask that everyone stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is announcements, and I'll ask our town manager, Jim Cunha, to take us through those, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. For anyone that may be here to speak on the Neighborhood Restaurant Amendment, Ordinance Amendment, that is going to be continued to next month, which will be April 1st. So if you've come to speak on that, we don't want to waste your time, but you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the proceedings. Effective today, town hall hours have changed. Town hall hours on Mondays will be from 8:30 in the morning till 8:00 PM in the evening to allow people to use our offices and services during the evening hours without missing work. Town hall hours Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday will remain 8:30 to 4:30, and on Friday, town hall hours will be 8:30 to noon. The Committee on Appropriations meetings will be every Tuesday this month as they begin review of both the municipal and school budgets. They will be held in the Barrington Middle School Presentation Room, 7:00 PM on Tuesday evenings, and their specific agendas will be posted on the town website. There'll be a rabies clinic on Sunday, March 10th, from 10 to 12 PM at the DPW Garage on Upland Way. The cost for the rabies vaccination is $10. If you've looked at the agenda, there's an announcement in there about the local state legislators having a marijuana legislation town hall meeting to discuss the proposed legislation. That meeting that was scheduled for Saturday, March 23rd, has been postponed, and we will announce a new date as soon as they can arrange one. And since we are closed Friday afternoons, and it is a tax month, the quarterly tax payments are due no later than Friday, March 29th, and town hall closes at noon, however, there is a deposit box outside the Finance Department door at the front of the building to make any deposits. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. A couple of just quick questions first is, on the Committee on Appropriations meeting, they will be getting the school budget, is it today?
Today, yes, sir.
And when will they receive the town's budget?
Next Monday.
Next Monday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other announcements?
I have a couple.
Okay.
The first is, oh, yeah, thank you. The first is that the Barrington Community Gardens are opening for the season on March for new lessies on March 30th, Saturday, and Sunday, March 31st, which is the first time that new lessies can go pick out their plot, their five-by-20 plot. Costs $25 for the season, and if you wish for more information, you should look at the barringtoncommunitygarden.org website. My other announcement is that I'm a grandmother. Our first grandchild, Bennett Cora Mabel Waymoth, was born on Saturday.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That strikes me as the best job you could have. Play with them, and then they get tired, and you hand them off. Okay, the next items on the agenda will be the Consent Agenda. These are items marked with an asterisk on the agenda if you're following. They're considered routine by the town council and usually non-controversial, so they'll be enacted by one motion, and there won't be a separate discussion on these items unless someone from the council or a citizen requests that we pull one. If we do, we'll consider the others first, vote on them, and then come back to the one that's been pulled. So would anyone like to take anything out of the Consent Agenda and deal with it separately?
Can we take correspondence out?
Okay, number 10, correspondence.
I'd like to take out the February 4th, 2019 minutes.
Okay. We'll just take out all of the minutes and do those all at once. Anything else?
The entertainment license from Barrington Music.
That's item 14. Anything else? I would like to take out the resignation of Andrea Mosher. Let me just say before, and then we'll vote on the ones that remain. Andrea has resigned from the Resilience and Energy Committee. She's been on the Energy Committee and then on the Resilience Committee for years. She was instrumental in getting the Solarize Barrington, which led to dozens, over 100 solar installations in Barrington. She was instrumental in helping us get the streetlights purchased and refitted with LED. So she will be greatly missed. I have investigated whether we can reject a resignation, and it doesn't appear that we can, so we'll call this a sabbatical instead of a resignation, and we'll call on her again. With that, and with the exception of items 6, 10, and 14, is there a motion to pass the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. The first one is, we'll take them in orders, item 6, and Vice President Waymoth, you mentioned the February 4th, 2019 minutes.
Under the public hearing for the Amendment to Chapter 161 Solid Waste, the polystyrene ban, I just wanted to correct the spelling of Tony Martini, there are two Ts, and that is Carol Doros, D as in dog, O-R-R-O-S. And also, I had a little bit of, I know that we discussed the ordinance regarding plastic drinking straws, and I had amended the polystyrene ban to be in, I think we discussed this about being in compliance with the Disabilities Act, but that last sentence in the, what, 1, 2, second paragraph, Mrs. Waymoth suggested that establishments should have supplies on hand for those who request a drinking straw and who have medical needs. It was more, they requested, if they request a drinking straw because of medical needs.
So could we change that to, instead of "and" who have, to "because they have"?
Can you just tell me where that is? Oh, is it?
Who request a drinking straw who have medical needs. Just anybody else shouldn't be able to ask for a plastic straw.
Yeah, I think the "and" covers it. It's not as accurate, but...
We could, so we can just amend that to say, Mary, are you looking, have you found the page?
Yeah, so it's at the bottom, right?
Yes, it currently reads, "Mrs. Waymoth suggested that establishments," do you see that sentence?
Yes, yes, I do.
What about if, after the word, the words drinking straw, we added "because they," instead of "and who," so let's say because they have medical needs?
I see it.
I would agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other modifications, changes?
That was it.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the minutes from the town council meeting on February 4th, February 6th, February 13th, February 26th, and accept the sealed executive session minutes of January 7, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention, no opposition. Next item is correspondence, and Councilman Brier, you mentioned that.
Yes, I just wanted to talk briefly about a couple of them. One is from East Bay Chamber asking for a member of the council to participate in their meetings, which I plan to do. Then the city of Newport inviting us to, inviting the town to participate in the parade, and I was just curious if we've ever done that before, if we have plans, if it wouldn't be burdensome for either the honor guard of either the Fire Department or Police Department to participate, and they wanted to. Just curious about the history.
I don't know...
If I could comment, Mr. President, I had the opportunity to march in that parade for a number of years in my previous life, and it is an awful lot of fun, as long as the weather is good. And as you know, in March, it can be very good, or it can be very bad, and I experienced both. As far as honor guards go, I will certainly offer that up to the police, fire chief and police chief. There are many, many honor guards in the parade, so, but they may want to do it to enjoy the festivities, and I'm sure they'd be welcomed if they chose to do that.
And then the town of Portsmouth requesting, I wasn't sure, are they requesting that we sign on to their resolutions, or they...
So we typically get resolutions from around the state asking that the town of Barrington pass a similar resolution supporting various things, and my practice has been, you know, we get a lot of resolutions, not just from around the state, that in my own case, if I feel that it has some impact on Barrington that I think is important, I want to put that on the agenda. If I don't, I don't, in this case, it does have an impact on Barrington, but sort of negative impact because we have been, one of our items was moved up, that is, well, the bike bridges was moved up, so I'm not sure we want to pass a resolution opposing changes that would reject that because we really need those bike bridges fixed.
Yeah, and if we're asking for anything from RIDOT, in addition to that, I think it should be the intersection by the middle school also. So I agree, I wanted to make sure it wasn't on here because next month, there's going to be a resolution drafted that we'd sign on to.
No, they do present those, and then sometimes, in fact, there will be one later on in the meeting that was presented by Central Falls, that I thought would make sense for us.
So I'll move to accept correspondence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions, the motion carries. The next item is the entertainment license for Barrington Music. Councilman Boyager.
Yeah, I was just asking myself, and I don't know if any of the department heads are, Jim, if you know, why does Barrington Music need an entertainment license? Is that for their music license? Anyone?
I'd have to look at the ordinance. I don't, I do not know. I imagine because they're playing music in the building and it's, can be used as entertainment if they have a recital or something to that effect, but...
I think it's just to acknowledge that there could be, you know, loud music, and that's the, you know, they wanted to notify the Barringtonians, and then also, I think it's, you know, we get a fee for that.
Oh, there's someone in the back that answers.
Well, I guess...
Do you have any insight?
I have your...
Oh, please come forward.
First off, congratulations, Ms. Waymoth.
Thank you.
For becoming a grandmother. It's awesome. I don't have a moment of hesitation about granting the license, I'm just wondering why you need one.
I was told by the town that if I'm going to be charging admission, that I would need an entertainment license.
And when you say charging admission, now, do you charge people to come in, or do you mean you charge for lessons?
I already currently charge for lessons, but when we have performances, I do for overhead and hiring sound guy, sound people, and other light people, things like that, I still need to pay them, so in order to pay them, I need to take money from the door.
All right, that makes more sense. I wasn't sure there was anything but lessons going on, but you have performances that are sort of different than that, is that right?
Yep, performances in addition to lessons.
Great, thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you for your time.
Sure. Do I hear a motion to grant the entertainment license for Barrington Music?
So moved.
Seconds.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on interviews and appointments, and the first one is for the Conservation Commission, Mr. McBride. Please come forward, yes. Thank you for coming in tonight. Could you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Conservation Commission?
Well, I'm an architect. I've lived in Barrington since birth. I've moved away probably about '79, returned about four years ago after my mom died, and so just want to get more involved in what's going on in Barrington. My background as an architect, my specialty, I'm an LED AP, if you know what that is, Accredited Professional, Leadership and Environmental and Energy Design, and just have an interest in conservation, so. And you had a position open, so I thought, why not?
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks for your willingness to serve. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Richard McBride to the Conservation Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is for Parks and Recreation Commission. There are two vacancies. One is the student representative, and one is the first alternate. We have already interviewed the student representative, Hayden Zimmerman, last month, and also interviewed one of the candidates, Elsie Seber, last month. There are two additional candidates interested in the position, and so I'd call up the first one, Anthony Rico. Thank you for coming in tonight. Anthony, please let us know what you, a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to Parks and Rec.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As you guys know, I've been a lifelong resident of this town. I love this town very much, and I have served in the Park and Recs before, and I'm just a lifelong resident, and I think I bring that positive energy, being a lifelong resident and knowing the issues on the town. And I've been going to meetings anyways, and I know, I didn't miss this past meeting, but the one before that, I actually raised my hand and said some positive words about history, about the recreation bond and the Sherwood, because some of the members weren't familiar with the bond initiative we got passed to the voters many years ago. And I think that's important to have somebody who has a lifelong resident who cares about the town and knows the issues in the fields that we have, and what passed before, what can be passed, and I know at the last meeting, I was here, you mentioned about Haynes Park as a possibility. I think that's a great possibility, using Haynes Park more. Also, to form a place location for maybe a possible practice field, a place location. Also, maybe design on property. I mean, there's a lot of different ideas, because I know field space and obviously is a big topic right now, so that's something to consider, and just being a positive advocate, and I think the Recs Department does a great job with their programs for the summer and the vacation times. They have a lot of programs that are very good. Yes, the concerts, there's a bingo night, Arts and Crafts, you have the Arts Festival. There's a lot of events, frankly. It's not just about the beach and the concerts. And I apologize if I did something wrong or anything like that, I feel bad, but in life, you learn, and that's why I'm asking for your confidence tonight, because I learned a lot. But again, I have full confidence in the people who run the town on a day-to-day basis. I want to bring that clear tonight, because I want to make that on the record, that I care about this town, and I love it so much, but I know there's certain areas that I handle with the dog officer and the police, they do a good job of controlling the beach, and I understand that fully. So again, I want to make that clear tonight. That's not an issue. They do an outstanding job, and I have full confidence in them. If there's any issues down there whatsoever, with dogs, whatever the issue is, I just want to make that clear, ladies and gentlemen, tonight. So if that was a concern, that's gone, okay? So I just want, I'll be high on it to be an alternate, because an alternate is there in case you need a vote and a person there. And a lot of times, this commission, some members can't make it for whatever reason. It's a volunteer board, and they work hard, so you need someone you can count on, and I would love to be that person, just to be there just in case you need a vote.
Okay.
And I promise you, I'll serve in a good, good, positive way for the town I love, Barrington, Allen. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your willingness to serve. The next candidate for the position is Richard Callahan. Mr. Callahan, please come forward. Thanks for coming in tonight. Could you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to Parks and Rec?
You're welcome. After a 40-year career in banking, I retired and moved to Barrington as a retiree. I'm not sure how many people have retired and moved to Barrington, but I happen to be one of them. I've always been part of a community that had a quality, a quality community includes a vibrant Parks and Recreation, whether it's the beach, and I live within a few hundred yards of the beach, and athletic fields, as well as parks in general. I coached my daughters in youth soccer back in Connecticut when I lived there, and I've always been part of the communities that I've worked in and lived in, between being United Way Campaign Chair, United Way President, President of a Kiwanis Club on the Board of Estimant Taxation in Norwalk, Connecticut. So I guess I have an open mind as a new member of the community. I did attend the Parks and Rec meeting last week and was impressed with the conversation that occurred. I know there's a lot of things going on in town regarding Parks and Rec and the things that they have control over, and I think I can bring some good judgment to the commission and be a good part of the commission.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Hayden Zimmerman as a student representative. We interviewed him, and Hayden's been to a couple of Parks and Rec meetings. He's been giving his input, which is helpful. He took full responsibility for the field situations and said it's all his fault, and he's willing to fix it. So with all of that, I think he's an outstanding candidate, we ought to appoint him.
His second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions. Hayden Zimmerman is our first student representative to Parks and Recreation, I think. Yes, he's the first one.
First student representative, and I would also make a motion to appoint Richard Callahan as a member, first alternate of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
So, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Though I have complete confidence in Richard Callahan's nomination, I would put forth Anthony Rico's name, who's, has, you know, been diligent in the service to the town, so I'd just like to go on record with that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to be heard?
I was going to actually ask Steve, because he knows the profile of the members of Parks and Rec the best. If a woman's voice might not be, Elsie Seber, if her voice might not be a good addition to Parks and Rec.
I'm sure it would be. I was interested in her background in event planning, especially because they deal with the family beach night...
Right.
...concerts and things like that. I don't, I haven't really paid attention in terms of a head count of the gender makeup. It's not as if women are not in the room, so to me, I was impressed by hearing from a retiree who wants to serve on the Parks and Rec Board, because I think there are a lot of things that Parks and Rec deals with that are specifically geared towards people, say, other than retirees, right? And it's a perspective that I think we've talked about at the Trail Committee, that age-friendly Barrington had a surprising number of responses that sort of said, you know, we'd like to have better access and more useful recreational facilities for older people. And I think that perspective is important, and isn't really in the room right now.
Okay, that's what I sort of needed to hear.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion?
I was wondering the same thing about kind of makeup and what's needed on the commission, less so about the gender makeup, and more just about the, no, the gaps, the gaps needed. It sounds like a retiree would be a good addition, focusing on that.
And a youth coach to boot, so.
Yeah, and I do, I do remember Elsie came with a good resume as a planner, and we do have Michelle, who is very well-qualified to take over those sorts of jobs, so I think, I think your position is valid.
Everyone, is anyone in favor of Richard, appointing Richard Callahan as first Parks and Rec? Is there a motion to, oh, there's already been a motion and seconded, I seconded it. All those in favor of Richard Callahan?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four to one. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Callahan. And Elsie Seber is, I think, somewhat new to the town, but she may not know it, but she's now in Kate's crosshairs as a future volunteer. That's what happens, Kate will find a place for her. Next item on the agenda is the Bristol County Water Authority Monthly Report. Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Tom Craig. I'm one of Barrington's representatives. Alan Clappert's away, and he asked me to cover for him. I believe you've all received the very brief report we sent out last week. If there are any questions, I can answer those. If not, I'm going to take a minute now, been on nine months, I guess it is, to share two perspectives, and this may be what Alan says every month, since I'm not coming every month here. But there are two big things that are on our agenda almost every month, and that affect our bills and the future of the Water Authority. One is Zee Potucket Water Line Hookup, and that is a long-term, big-dollar project. As this month's report notes, the recent progress with these providence is promising. I won't count that chicken until it hatches, and a lot can happen before then, but it certainly makes eminent sense that they and we should work together rather than try to hunt it on our own. The other is the long-term water main replacement program, which sort of gets buried in there, but it's a large-ticket item in terms of our funding. I was reflecting earlier that American business today often thinks in terms of three months, six months, most a year. Our politics seems to be on two-year cycles. Well, the Water Authority is basically on a 50-year planning mechanism. Our lines are going to wear out, we know that, and we need to replace them, and therefore that is being done on a program basis. It means more cost today, that's why the bills are going up effective, I think, the end of this month. But it's necessary to do that in order to support a gradual replacement, rather than having the whole thing fall apart as so much of our infrastructure and the country is doing. So those are my two feels from having been there. Also, as I think I said when I came before you once before, for covering for Alan, that I'm impressed by the quality of all the members with the new member that we just got from Warren. I'm no longer the new kid on the block, but I'm still very green to it, and I'm running fast. And if there are any further questions, any of these, again, happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions?
No questions, but that's wonderful that our relationship, or BCWA's relationship with these providence has improved.
Yep, fingers crossed.
That's really encouraging.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This agenda items for members of the public who want to speak regarding a topic that is not already on the agenda. We'll be talking about athletic fields later, so if you could hold comments, I'll make sure everybody gets a chance to talk on it. If you want to talk about something other than that, we can do that now. If you could come forward, Mr. Remeschitis, and state your name and address, and tell us what you think.
That's my name, Tom Remeschitis. Tom Remishitis, 1 Howard Street. I got a quick question. I'll hold my other stuff until the turf field proposal comes up. Item number 24, introduction for amendment of vehicles and traffic on one-way streets, Waldron Avenue. How did that come about and how come nobody in the neighborhood was informed about it?
That is only for introduction, so there won't be a public hearing on it. They will be informed about the, the public hearing. It'll be, it'll be in the newspaper and posted online. This is, this is actually only a portion of it that is between, for St. Luke's. Is this the St. Luke's one?
It's between Fountain and, I'm trying to remember the other street at the other end.
Crown.
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 And there's only one private residence on that particular section of road, so it should have minimal impact on both, both Crown and Fountain exit out onto Washington, so anyone in that neighborhood can get out onto Washington. And it, our police chief, as he said in his memo, took a hard look at it, and it's, it's for the safety of the children, being dropped off at St. Luke's School. It's Monday through Friday from 7:30 to 8:30.
So it's one way, it'll be one way from 7:30 to 8:30?
To the north, yes.
Okay.
So hopefully that'll alleviate the traffic problem there at pickup?
Pickup is going to be done in the back, I'm told, in the back of the school, in the, at the end of the day, so there was no need to put it in for the...
So they're changing the whole plan around that's been in effect, basically?
I'm not, I'm not sure how the school has done it. I do know they requested this particular change for the safety of the children. Police chief went out, took a look at it, talked to the stu, talked to the administration and, and observed the drop-off, and he's in support of it.
Because we came up with that plan maybe 10 years ago because of the traffic problems there at pickup time, and everybody was supposed to be parking in the church parking lot and walking over to get their kids, and they're all over the place now. Sometimes you can't even get down the streets because they park on both sides.
Well, once again, this is a drop-off, so they just, that's probably why it's in the morning and not in the afternoon when they use the parking lot. In the morning, the parents are doing a drive-by and dropping the kids off. Going north makes sense because the right side of the vehicle would be at the front door of the school, so they can drop them curbside.
You may want to talk to the principal or father of our gees about the pickup, if that's your concern.
We'll go through it again because I had talked with Chief Lacrosse before, and that's how they came up with the plan the last time. So, thanks.
You also will have the opportunity to speak on the pub, at the public hearing.
Okay. Anyone else want to be heard on the public comment? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the next item, which is to discuss an act on Town Council Committee Commission Liaison Assignments. We've already set up the liaisons, but we did so when we were short a member, and we know that Joy Hearn is a sailor and maybe more interested in, in the Harbor Commission, and Steve has been on Parks and Rec, so they talked about possibly swapping those. So I'm not even, I suppose we need a motion to do that. We might as well. Does anyone want to be heard on those two?
It just occurred to me, isn't your, is your husband on the Harbor Commission?
He is on the Harbor Commission.
Is that, is that a problem? But where it's not a voting position, it's just really representing the town council? I don't, I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Now, it's just the liaison position, it's, there's no vote or anything like that, so we're good.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to appoint Steve Boyagen to Parks and Recreation and Joy Hearn to Harbor Commission and maintain all of the other committee assignments as they were earlier published?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Did you get all that, Mary? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to discuss an act on short-term rentals. These are, I guess, like, the kind of short-term rentals for housing units, like vacation rentals by owner is one kind, and Airbnb is another, and there are others out there, but those are shorter-term rentals rather than longer-term leases. Jim, did you want to just introduce that for us?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. The, the short-term rental issue has been brought up, and it just so happened that the URI MPA program took that on as their study and came up with some, some recommendations as to how communities can put a control on short-term rentals. Obviously, we have ordinances in place, such as noise ordinances and parking ordinances that would, that would limit the use of short-term rentals as party houses and that type of thing. We have a very small impact. It's 0.27% of our homes are, from their study, are used for short-term rentals. However, they do make some recommendations as to how you can, how you could possibly limit the, your exposure. Some of the recommendations would be to, to have a pot planning and EDC take a review of these, the study, and come up with recommendations. You can require short-term rentals to be licensed or permitted, and this allows regulatory enforcement ensure, ensure that we're collecting taxes on that rental property. You can retire, you can require short-term rentals to be owner-occupied, so they don't become investment homes where there's continual rental. You can limit the rental frequency to 90 days a year, 60 days a year, which means it, it really is a home and someone goes away for a while and then would rent it out, but it wouldn't become just simply a short-term rental house. And you can also restrict occupancy to no greater than two occupants per bedroom, which would limit the party house atmosphere that you have the potential to get. But I think, as I said, I think EDC and the Planning Board can take a harder look at this and come forward with some recommendations as to how we might want to regulate short-term rentals in Barrington. Unlike Newport or Narragansett where they actually have employees that are hired to track and, you know, that monitor these things, we don't have that kind of exposure here, but I think there's probably some, some things we can do to make sure that they're held within check.
May I speak? I brought this actually to the council. I thought it was last year, but it may have been like two, two years ago, two to three years ago, maybe. And at the time, we learned that municipalities were getting 1% back from the state with an agreement that had been made only with Airbnb at the time. And the concern was that all the other sites that deal with short-term rentals were getting away with not contributing to the tax base. And we did send it to the Planning Board, and they struggled with it because there was so little information to, to, to make any recommendations. So this study, I was impressed by the study from the league, and I, I think it's a great idea to send it along with the ask to the Economic Development Commission as well as the Planning Board to revisit this issue, because whenever that was, two years ago, I think it was brought to my attention with complaints in my own neighborhood, specifically of high school students renting a house for graduation and really creating a nuisance. So I think that it's a good idea to revisit this.
His report says last year, you, you receive 1.25% of the 5% state hotel tax is what the town receives in addition to a 1% local hotel tax. So last year, we had just under $3,000 in revenue. So this would, if a licensing becomes possible, we could increase that revenue. I don't think it's going to increase us significantly because we don't have that exposure, but as Vice Chair Wayne, Vice President Wayne said, it's more about controlling conduct and how the homes are utilized, I think, than a revenue stream.
Right. Yeah, and I, I think when the EDC and Planning looks at it, the, the focus should be on either a reporting mechanism or, or something to ensure that we're not suddenly having a hotel functionally in a residential neighborhood. I haven't heard complaints at that level, but have heard complaints about noise, about somebody noticing their, their neighbor's place was rented out and then it was used as a filming studio. I think, I don't know if she sent it to all of us, but might have just come to me. And that, yeah, that's something people don't want to have, understandably.
I think especially the owner-occupied building is, I think, key because there are people that buy up houses and that's how they make their living is just short-term rentals from there on in.
Yeah, and I, I would like to see this go to Economic Development and Planning again. One of the things that just makes sense, and I can't see how anyone would oppose it, is at the very least, the requirement of posting noise ordinances in your, you know, if you're, if you're going to have an Airbnb or a VRBO, you've got a requirement to say, these are the noise ordinances in town, please respect your neighbors, kind of thing, so...
Right.
So unless there's any further discussion on it, do we have a motion to refer this to the Economic Development Committee and to the Planning Board?
So moved, including that study, and the recommendations from, from the study.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries. Before we move on to our next item, I just want to take a short five-minute break, so we will stand in recess for five minutes. Okay, I'm calling the meeting back into session. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had all the documents in front of me. This, this item on the agenda is to discuss an act on the formation of an ad hoc advisory athletic field committee. One of the issues that, that came up very early on when we began discussing the field fees, among the other fees, was the conditions of the field. And I think most people acknowledge that we took a hard hit because of the building of the middle school, and it forced us to concentrate a lot of play onto fewer fields. But in addition to that, we wanted to have kind of a longer-term look at our field utilization, improving the condition of the fields in the long-term and improving field access. With that in mind, I have been speaking with the Chair of the School Committee, Megan Douglas, in, in trying to see if we can come up with a joint committee. And the reason that I thought a joint committee would make sense is that although there are some school fields and there are some municipal fields, we really ought to be looking at it in a comprehensive way. Just for example, if we want to rest a field for a particular season, we don't want to have the schools say, we're going to rest this number of fields, at the same time we're saying, we're going to rest this number of fields. We ought to be talking to each other. And it makes sense, especially since, unlike in some other towns, our Department of Public Works does the maintenance on school fields and on town fields. So with that in mind, I thought it would make sense for us to come up with a joint committee of both the Town Council and the School Committee. The goal would, we really have two goals. One would be to look at fields sort of in general, to explore the improvement, maintenance, and acquisition of athletic fields, and provide a detailed report and recommendations to the Town Council and the School Committee. And then the other goal is one that is in our, it's, it's in our comprehensive plan. There's been a lot of talk about athletic tur, artificial turf, and our comprehensive plan specifically mentions that we should explore artificial turf at Victory Field. Now, having said that, every time the issue comes up, there are debates about cost, there are debates about environmental impacts, and there are debates about health issues. So it makes sense for us to really explore these in a very, if, for example, at the, at the workshop, we had some folks talking about how you absolutely cannot recycle a field, and then other people saying with equal conviction that you can recycle a field. Well, if we do a, a comprehensive kind of report on this, we'll be able to have folks who've looked at the health issues, who've looked at the environmental issues, and have looked at the cost issues, and they'll be able to say, this is, this is the cost of it. Is it something that you want to do? And then we can look into whether we want to do it as a town and whether we want to do it cooperatively with the, the school district in our town, or even do it on a, another field that's, that's municipally owned. But at least we'll have that data. So that's, that's the reason I put this on the agenda, and I've, I've prepared a, a draft, a charge to the committee, which, does anyone want to be heard on this before I read my draft charge? Do you want to just wait?
I, I was wondering, when I saw this on the agenda, I was just wondering what an ad hoc committee would contribute in addition to, say, the Parks and, Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec, I guess. But are you thinking of having members of Conservation be involved here, someone from Parks and Rec, someone, or from the various town boards as members to the joint school and council?
Yes. So that's, I've kind of come up...
EW?
Yes. I've, I've kind of come up with a proposed membership, and I can go through that. The, the membership of this committee, I'm suggesting would be two members of the Town Council, one of them to serve as a co-chair, two members of the School Committee, one of them to serve as a co-chair, three members of Parks and Rec, one member of the Conservation Committee, and one member of the community appointed by the Town Council, and then an equal number of, up to five members appointed by the School Committee. In addition to that, there'd be the ex officio membership of the Superintendent of the Department of Public Works, John Renquina, Athletic Director George Finn, and Recreation Director Michelle Jeremiah. I would suggest that those folks have voting privileges because they really are the experts. John Renquina really knows, you know, what, what is practical and what we need to do for the fields. The, and I'm happy to just talk about the membership, but I, does it make sense for me to kind of go through the charge specifically?
Sure.
Okay. The purpose would be a joint committee which will provide long-term recommendations to the Barrington Town Council, Barrington School Committee, on how to improve and maintain the athletic fields as well as to increase field access. The charge, number one, to explore the improvement, maintenance, and acquisition of athletic fields, and to provide a detailed report and recommendations to the Town Council and to the School Committee, and to conclude their business within one year. Number two, to research the cost, environmental, and health impacts of artificial turf fields, and to provide a detailed report and recommendations to the Town Council and School Committee, and to conclude their business within one year. You asked another question, Kate, which was, what about Parks and Recreation? This, this would include, as I mentioned, members of Parks and Rec. I think this is looking at a long-term kind of plan as opposed to short-term fixes which the, the Parks and Rec can do, and also, once the plan is in place, Parks and Rec would be able to continue to execute on that plan, but will be able to draw together the School Department and the, and the municipal side. side.
I think it's a good idea. I am not sure I necessarily see the numbers of Parks and Rec as opposed to Conservation Commission, and the notable absence of somebody from the Planning Board, who is the connection to the comprehensive plan.
And absence of officials from the leagues who use the fields.
Well, it does include, my proposal includes at least one member of the community appointed by the Town Council. That could be, that could be one of the league presidents. We could expand that, we could expand the size of the committee to include spaces for additional league presidents, so you get soccer and baseball and lacrosse and that sort of thing, or at least a couple of them, so that they would, certainly everyone, these are going to be open meetings, since it's a committee appointed by us, it'd be subject to the open meetings laws, and people would be able to have input anyway.
Yeah, but voting.
Voting, right. They would not have voting unless they were on the committee.
I think when it comes to the discussion of, and I'm being blunt here, the discussion of artificial turf, I think we already know what, where Parks and Rec stand on that, and I would like to see a greater balance with the environmental effects and health effects, which I think would be a position that the Conservation Commission would take.
Okay. If we're putting together a group to study an issue and report, I don't think an outcome-focused makeup of the committee is the way to approach it. I agree personally on the environmental impact, but I think to view it as adding more people from the Conservation Commission to direct the outcome of what should be an objective study is a way to get to the best answer.
I hear your point. Because all of these boards are volunteers, who sometimes have a difficult time making their own meetings with a quorum, I'm a little concerned that adding another ad hoc meeting, because there already is an ad hoc for the trails, and expecting everybody to show up at every meeting, I'm just, this is, I'm just saying that I almost think that one member from maybe each of the land use boards might be, I don't know, I-
Well, I think in an ad hoc committee that's going to pull three people from an already-existing committee, I think, is a lot of burden for that committee.
I think that's excessive, frankly.
So I kind of, I spoke with Parks and Rec about this at their last meeting, and I think the view was, we have two things. We have the 2001 study, which was very comprehensive, made a lot of recommendations, actually prompted quite a bit of action, as Kate well knows.
2001?
The 2001 study, which resulted-
I wasn't here, I wasn't around.
No, but it resulted not too long after in the ref bond.
Okay, yes.
And the field improvements all around town, including the middle school, Sherwood, Cheneze, Beach, everything, right? And it, notwithstanding the fact that a lot of the work that was identified there has been done, and with the middle school, a lot of it has been undone, it kind of identifies the challenges the town faces. That and the comp plan put together, I think Parks and Rec felt, you know, hey, this is really something that we can handle. I did talk to the chairman after that meeting on Thursday, and it was my suggestion that we sort of have three members of Parks and Rec, because it just so happens that in December, they appointed a field subcommittee of three members. And so it was a mechanism to say, okay. Now, Parks and Rec knows well, because that's part of the discussion at a lot of their meetings, that there is a, I don't want to call it a tension, but a complication that the town doesn't tell the schools how to run their properties, and nor does the school really say, okay, here's how we're going to deal with athletic fields on our property. It's, you know, it's the town's property in general, but different people, same what happens there. And that is a complication. So I think, you know, having talked to Kate Seward about it, we recognize there's value in having the schools and the town at the table at the same time when we discuss these issues, so we don't get tied in knots over whose budget is it going on, you know, it just becomes, you know, we're getting in the way of a good solution by worrying about these details. So I think there's value to it. I think in terms of the short-term things that we ought to do on a day-to-day basis anyway, my concern about a committee like this would be, you know, maybe we get around to appointing them in April, they meet in May, and in June, we're talking about what they think we might do, and hey, look, all the seasons are already over. And so I think that's where we can draw the distinction between the function that can be fulfilled today by Parks and Rec, which is, hey, guys, what do you want to do with the fields? Any idea what we can do in the next six weeks, six months? And to have this committee study the, kind of like the committee in 2001 did, what are the long-term solutions that we can put in place or try to pursue? Some of them might be fruitless, some of them not, I don't know, but worth a try. But that's a long way of saying, it's my thought that Parks and Rec already having a field subcommittee, being very familiar with the issues, having heard from GPW month in, month out, about the challenges they're facing, you know, I think it is important.
I think it's a great approach to merging the schools and the town on this discussion, because I think it involves both of those entities. And I think it provides an opportunity for a deep dive in this issue, and kind of really put out a strategic plan going forward. And I think, kind of, if you set the committee up with a nice, tight timeframe, you can kind of, you know, network people to death and come out with a great solution. So I really applaud kind of the vision, both the Schools Committee and the town, on this issue.
Does anyone from the public want to be heard on the topic of this ad hoc advisory field committee? Mr. Remeschitis, please.
Tom Remeschitis, One Howard Street. How many ad hoc committees are we going to do on this? We did one in 1987, we did one in 2001, we have a comprehensive plan as of 2015. We should take the 87, the 2001, and the comprehensive plan and work off of that. We do not need another ad hoc committee. If you so choose to do another ad hoc committee, I suggest you do even amounts of people from each group. Do not, I'm asking you, do not have the School Committee pick five other people to be on this ad hoc committee, because it's only going to be people that they want that are going to say no. I've been to a lot of the School Committee meetings, I've been to a lot of the Council Committee meetings, and it's always this, if we can get together and do everything together, I think it would go better. But to be lopsided from one committee and have five outstanding people besides the two people on the School Committee meeting, that's unfair. Have two people or three people from each group on this committee, and then everybody has an equal say. If you're going to give voting powers to this ad hoc committee, then it should be equal amongst every group, not weighed heavy on the School Committee and not weighed heavy on the Town Council.
It is equal numbers, that's-
You said two from the School Committee, and then the School Committee will appoint five other people at their desire.
Yeah, so there'd be three members of the Parks, this is just my proposal.
I understand.
We would be on the Town Council appointing three members from Parks and Rec, one member from Conservation Commission, and a member of the community, that's five. And then they would appoint five, so-
He's just not telling the School Committee how to choose their five.
They pick the five they want. I should point out, too, that although there is, there's voting on this, we're asking for, the real part of this is going to be the report and the recommendations, because the committee won't have the ability to say, you should purchase this field here. I mean, the Town Council doesn't even have that. We would have to go before the financial town meeting to do that, but we can get the recommendations and the detailed report that says, it makes sense to have a resting, I'm making this up, a resting schedule that says, Cheneze gets rested this season, and so on, whatever they think is appropriate.
I understand that, and we talk about that at Parks and Rec all the time. But then again, you're still saying the School Committee's going to pick five other people besides what's on here.
So there would be five appointed by the-
That's seven, from the School Committee, because they're going to pick the people that they want to say no to whatever they want at the schools. So in 1987, when this ad hoc committee was formed, it said we needed two extra multi-use fields, we need to rest our fields, turf should be looked at. 2001, same thing. So we're in 2019, it was put into the comprehensive plan in 2015, we haven't even looked at it yet. We've done some things, but turf was one of those, and now, because the middle school came about, and the fields got taken offline, so now there's a problem.
The proposal's seven and seven. The people are even, if that's the concern, people from the Town Council and its committees, and people-
Why do you need more people from the School Committee compared to all the other committees?
But, because most of the fields- We are appointing people from municipal committees. They also have a facilities committee. I don't, they may say, we don't need to appoint those folks, they may say they want to appoint those folks. They have their own facilities committee, so I do think that it should be equal appointments, that way we've got sort of equal buy-in on both sides, and-
But I think we're just wasting our time again, because we look at these other two reports, and we don't do anything.
But to Steve's point, this report ended up with a bond issue that, where we improved Sherwood Park, we put in the tennis courts, we put in the basketball.
So all the parks, all the baseball fields, had somebody sponsor them that actually brought it up from the Town Council. If you remember correctly, June Speikman and Marty Scavengelli. So they were behind those projects. Nobody here is behind any project.
Whoa, wait a minute. This report was before my time.
Correct.
But the bond issue was the Town Council that I was on, and Marty Scavengelli was not here.
But he had brought it up, he was one of the big supporters of the whole project.
Okay, well.
Well, I mean, I'm sure you'll agree that the state of knowledge has changed since 1987. I don't even know that they have field turf back then, there's been a lot of changes.
2001 was.
So, back, yeah, I used to play on artificial turf, and back then it was that basement sort of mini golf stuff on top of cement.
Because when we played at Hendrick and they had it, and that was in 81, so.
Yeah, so I think things have changed enough that it would make sense for us to look at things again. There's also been a chance to have, there have been some studies in terms of health, because there are folks who are concerned, there's been enough out there about it, and it makes sense for us to have people looking at it closely and making a report, not just saying, I've read and it's fine. You have a report that says, here's the study from, I don't know, Princeton, that says there's a correlation, or there's no correlation, or whatever it is.
Right.
So that's, the point of this is to get some long-term thinking behind it, and I do think that we'll probably need to do this again in 20 years at least, at the outside, but I think we should do it now.
Like I said, I think it's a waste, in my own opinion. We should be working off what we already have, instead of going through the whole process again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the fields? Okay, anyone from the Council?
On the specific proposal, I think the number of people is already high, but I think it's important that at least one or two people be there representing the leagues. I don't know where those spots come from, but I think without them there, we're just looking at the earth itself and not what's happening on top of it, and I think that's an important factor.
So this was in 2001, how many, do you, does anyone, do you remember how many were on that committee? I thought there were-
Well-
I think there were 18 on that committee. It is, and I, I'm trying to keep it small enough that it's not unwieldy. On the other hand, you know, the middle school building committee has-
Kate, I think the cover letter has the CCs on it and Melissa's letter, and I assume that those were the other members of the committee.
So that's less than 18.
I don't think so. These are members of the Town Council at the time, not-
Mike, you were on the committee, right?
Very last nation, after this, all towns have 18 members.
Okay.
Got it, yep. Was that with the School Committee as well? Do you want me to read them? Were there School Committee members on that?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Richard D. Rienzo, he was, he was the, I think he was the soccer league, Lawrence Farmer, George Finn, David Gardner, Mark Galouli, he was a member of the Town Council, Clyde Howarth, Catherine Clock, Terry Lieberman, Peter Lund, Kevin O'Malley, he was not a voting member, along with Mark Galouli, Michael Orifus, Leona Phillips, Mark Powers, Michael Rafa, he was the, he was-
The Recreation Director.
Right. Michael Seward, Charlotte Sornbarger, Jay Speikman, Gary Waggoner.
I don't think we had folks from the School Committee on at that time.
That's 18 members. So 14 is less than 18.
I agree.
It's actually 17, because-
Ex officio.
The ex officio members, George Finn, Michelle, and John Rinquena, would bring it up to 17, so it's already a pretty substantial group. And I'd like to keep in mind that these are folks who are going to make recommendations, it would then be up to the School Committee and to the Town Council to adopt those recommendations, modify them, anything like that. And I'm sure we would hear from people, but this would be an opportunity for folks to collect the important data and present it to us. Sure.
If you guys go through with the ad hoc committee, are you going to form a committee between yourselves and the School Committee to meet?
So-
Or as two groups, five and five?
No, this committee, I'm proposing that the members of this committee include two members from this body.
I realize that, but you just said that it would be up to the Council and the School Committee to approve the recommendations.
Yeah, I'm not sure what would happen at the end, we may, I mean, that would just- We may, I mean, that would just be a joint meeting, but we could have separate meetings. One of the things that we're doing now is we're talking between the school committee and the town council. So there'll be a lot of communication back and forth.
Thank you.
So as it's, sure.
Catherine Horn, 81 Highland Avenue. I just, to that point, I think that's a good point, is what is the end game to the ad hoc committee? So we, you know, say in a year, you get down the road and there's still two different ideas of what should happen and two different boards trying to make a decision. So I think that the outcome that you're looking for should be, you know, yes, we need to look at it and investigate, but I think the ad hoc committee should have a more specific deadline and description of exactly what you're working towards. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was one of the recommendations from the school committee that we set a deadline. I've kind of chosen one year. It's often hard to get folks together, so anything short of a year is sort of tough. But in terms of the end game, in, I would say probably in most cases, when we get recommendations from any of our volunteer committees, we tend to take them. These are folks who've looked at them closely. And I think especially on sort of the first issue, which is improvement, maintenance, acquisition of athletic fields, that's probably an area where most people aren't going to sort of micromanage it too much. If the committee's looked at it, that makes a lot of sense. The other one, obviously, the artificial turf field is a much more controversial one. But the advantage to doing this is that you would then have all the data in front of you. And if anyone wanted to say, you know, it's not quite the same as someone getting up at a meeting and saying, this causes cancer, or this is perfectly healthy. If we have a report, then you can look at the report and you can say, well, that's wrong. I've looked at the citation in there and that's just wrong, what the report said is this. So it helps us sort of concretize this, make it more concrete. So as it stands now, the membership was two members of the town council, one as co-chair, two members of the school committee, one as co-chair, three members of Parks and Rec, one member of Conservation, one member of the community appointed by the town council. And Kate, you talked about maybe adding someone from the planning board?
I don't know, maybe, maybe not.
I was thinking that the Parks and Rec is, they're pretty familiar with, as you heard from TR, they're pretty familiar with what we've done in the past, both in terms of the 2001 study, like Mike Seward was on that, and our comprehensive plan. So in my view, they would probably provide that link to the comp plan. Anyone else?
We add two spots for league heads, presidents from one or two of the leagues that run their sports in Barrington.
Okay, right now, we have one member of the community, which I was viewing as potentially a member. Are you suggesting that we make it three members or two members of the community?
So the community member was, you anticipated was going to be a league member?
I'm not sure what, I mean, I suppose we could limit it to league members, but I...
It might, I don't know, but that would...
I mean, that would be up to us to appoint.
That person is not necessarily representing us or the town.
Right, it's a third interest.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think just adding, adding to the 14, two additional people.
So, okay, two additional to the 14 to bring it to 16, meaning...
Yeah, so still less than the 18.
Add one league.
It would bring it to 18, please.
So Bill Horn, 81 Highland Avenue, president of East Bay Lacrosse. So I appreciate where you're going with this, and I think that we've had coordinated conversations as league heads as well. I think if you gave two, that gives the ability, if there are pro, you know, and con, you can differentiate and have one representative from each of those, or if everyone's in favor of the same thing, then you have two looking at it the same way, so to speak. But I would say, at least from the lacrosse perspective, I think that if you had two, that's probably sufficient. I don't know that you need everyone. I think that as leagues, we can coordinate and feed our message through a couple of representatives.
Yeah, I was suggesting two, not two from each league, two from all of the...
I thought you were going two or three, or, yeah, I'm thinking two would be overall. It would be my...
Thank you.
So who are you envisioning the community member to be if they aren't the leagues?
It certainly could be the leagues. I'm not, I'm just not prejudging that. With the other positions, it's sort of, in my view, I'd just as soon have Parks and Rec decide who the three would be. Conservation decide who their rep. And then we would select the members of the community.
Well, do we select or do they apply like they...
They would apply. I'm thinking at our next meeting, we'd select them. And then the school committee would decide who they wanted on there.
Well, I assume you've discussed, where's your comfort with two additional?
I would just say having seven committees, but that's enormous.
Yeah.
I think that I would rather hear that the league are going to have a very clear way of expressing their information and that becomes part of the report rather than having to remain in those places. But I also respect that that's our decision. And we have already looked at adding people from the facility committee that we have as well as people from the athletic advisory council at the high school. So I'm not sure, not concerned that nobody on our side would be totally approve these fields and everybody. But that's, I think if you just get too big, that would be my only concern. And I think that would be absolutely my...
Yeah, no, I even thought of 14, it was too big, but I think that interest is important to add. So what about then just restricting the one community member to somebody representing one of the leagues?
Because then that's, that's basically, that's the third interest with the council to, three, four, five, six, and school committee, seven.
Yeah, but they're the, I guess I, I'm kind of, I'm kind of with you, Jacob, that they're the users. They're the ones who are on the fields all the time. So, you know, in theory, you could have somebody who's a neighbor to a field who might say, I want to restrict the fields, I want to be on it. I just wouldn't be in favor of appointing a person like that who had a very narrow interest, that wasn't kind of focused on the conditions of the fields.
I agree.
And who better than the, than the league presidents?
Mr. President, if I may, to reinforce what the school committee had to say, what Megan Douglas said was, you know, keeping this committee smaller is probably better. I don't think, they will have open meetings. The leagues, any other interested parties can certainly participate in those conversations and should provide inputs to the committee. I don't think you need to be on the committee to be able to express yourself and to get your point across. So I would say that the smaller you make it, the better off you're going to be in getting to where you, the goal of getting a report out within a year.
Okay, so can we stick with one member of the community, which would likely be, likely be the representative of the leagues? We'll see who applies, maybe they don't want to, they probably want to be involved, but we'll see who applies. I would tend to lean toward that because I think they've got the most skin in the game on those fields, rather than adding another one.
What if you reduce that to just the board members, the three, the two from the council, three from Parks and Rec, and one from Conservation? And then having four from the school committee along with two school committee members? So it's six and six. Because Megan makes a good point that, I mean, the leagues will be involved, certainly.
Well, and ultimately, this council and school committee have a vote, so what about one person from council and one person from school committee? Because in the end, we have a final vote based on the report, so we don't have to influence the report very much. And so if that can keep community members, more community members on the committee without creating too large of a committee, rather than eliminate the community spot, eliminate a council spot.
We certainly could do that. I'm not sure, you know, it's a tough spot for Megan because she's here, but none of her colleagues are, so. What do you think about it, Steve? Now, this is an issue that's been important to you and you've looked at it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm somewhat agnostic about the makeup of the committee.
Somewhat what?
Agnostic about it? No, those strong beliefs one way or another. You know, I think, for example, we had a vacancy on Parks and Rec that we filled tonight. There was no league president who applied to be on it. League presidents, maybe it's not universally the truth, are not really the people necessarily from the leagues who deal with the fields on a day-to-day basis. They usually have a representative who does that, some other member of the board. So I think we're thinking too much about, this is exactly the person who needs to be on the committee. And I think any group of reasonable people would probably end up at the same place regardless of the makeup. When they hear the reports from, you know, the guys who get their hands dirty in the grass and hear input from people like, you know, well, we dealing with it in terms of land acquisition, planning board dealing with space constraints, you know, those types of things, I think reasonable people from anywhere are going to do just fine at this job. So I don't want to get tied up in how many members of this are represented, how many members of that are represented. I think we just, you know, solicit applications, see what we get.
Okay, and in terms of the number of members from the council?
You know, in my experience with the tax exemption committee, it was helpful to have two only because you are essentially three-quarters of the way there. Even though Peter dissented on our ultimate recommendation, it was a way to say, look, we've heard, we've heard from enough of the council that we kind of know where this is going. You know, I knew in advance exactly what Peter's concerns were, and that's helpful. I don't think it's a necessity, but...
So I'm just going to make a motion, then we can sort of have a discussion about that if there needs to be after that, but I want to make sure this is down. I make a motion that we create an ad hoc advisory athletic field committee. The purpose will be a joint committee which will provide short, long-term solutions, long-term recommendations to the Barrington Town Council, the Barrington School Committee on how to improve and maintain the athletic fields as well as to increase field access. The charge would be, number one, to explore the improvement, maintenance, and acquisition of athletic fields, and to provide a detailed report and recommendations to the town council and to the school committee, and to conclude their business within one year. Number two, to research the cost, environmental, and health impacts of artificial turf fields, and to provide a detailed report and recommendations to the town council and the school committee, and to conclude their business within one year. Two separate reports for the single committee. Membership would be two members of the town council, one is chair, serves as co-chair, two members of the school committee, one to serve as co-chair, three members from Parks and Rec, one member of Conservation Commission, and one member of the community as appointed by the town council, and up to five members as appointed by the school committee, in addition to ex officio members who would be, have the ability to vote, superintendent for the Department of Public Works, John Rinquena, athletic director, George Finn, recreation director, Michelle Jeremiah. That is my motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Now, in terms of, is everyone okay with the purpose and the charge?
Yes.
Okay, so we're down to membership.
If you're putting as much weight on the second charge as you are on the first charge, I disagree that there are three Parks and Rec and one Conservation.
Well...
You know, people are biased and...
I do think people, I do think people come with their own opinions, but especially on the second charge, this is, the issue is really going to be, at some point, we will be looking at a turf field as has been looked at, but we will then have a report by these folks that will answer the questions that come up and are always debated with equal conviction on both sides as facts, but will have the facts in the report. And a report is something you can, you can go through and say, well, that study isn't right, or that sort of thing. It's different than if somebody hit you at the meeting and says, you know, artificial turf field will increase your lifespan by 10 years.
I hear what you're saying. At the same time, studies, I've seen it with the plastic bag ban. There are studies that come out saying that plastic is the best thing for you, it's the best thing for the environment. And there are an equal number of studies by scientists that disprove that, that say exactly the opposite. And it really, studies are especially problematic when it comes to health benefits and/or the opposite. And I think it is putting, it is putting a lot of emphasis on Conservation, who will be interested in the environmental effects of artificial turf that most other people are not concerned with.
To the extent that they have facts, studies that they can talk about as opposed to concerns, which they certainly could put in there, those can be, I have no doubt that if we get a report from this and the report leans heavily one way, we will probably get studies attempting to refute that. This is a starting point for us. We've got to do something.
I agree. I absolutely agree.
I'd like to comment something that might alleviate kind of the concerns that both Kate and I have in different directions. Can we eliminate our prescription for how the committee is made up in that the council will appoint five people? And at next meeting, we'll see who the people are that would like to be on this, and then we'll be making a motion to appoint those people. Rather than saying it must be XYZ, we can look at the people who are willing to serve on this committee, put in the time, and then make the decision then. And we can, we might end up having this discussion, we might... And we can, we might end up having this discussion, we might find, you know, 12 people that want the five spots, and then we have to look at the makeup. But we also might be taking a lot of time now to, to name the chairs that we're gonna have to coax people to sit in.
I, the concern I have about that is that we have Parks and Rec for a reason, and we've given them a job. They are, they've been looking at, at these issues in terms of, not just in terms of turf field, and certainly they have looked at that, and I would expect that they'd have some things to talk about in terms of cost associated with that, that might really help us nail that down. But I also don't want to ignore volunteers from that committee because this is, this topic is right up their alley. We're looking at trying to make a more comprehensive, longer-term thing. So I, I do want to have those folks on the committee myself.
I would agree with the council president on that. I think we have to recognize the importance of the committees. We've charged them, we've asked a lot from them, and I think leaving them out of kind of this kind of an important discussion would be short-sighted.
I, I absolutely agree with that. It's just that I feel that it's heavily balanced, or in terms of Parks and Rec, rather than a balance between the environment and the field, but.
You could argue though Parks and Rec is about the environment, so I mean, it could be the.
Well, I, I agree, well, I'm clearly in the minority, so take your vote.
Okay. I'm calling for a vote. A motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
All opposed.
One opposition, no abstentions, the motion carries. For the next item, I would, I'm gonna suggest, based on sort of interest that we've seen in the past, I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Steve Boyajin and Jacob Brier as members of this committee, with Steve Boyajin to serve as co-chair from our side. And obviously, you can say no, but I know that you've both been very focused on this issue, so it makes sense to me that you'd be our reps on that.
I'll second that.
I was just gonna say, I, I don't know, Kate, whether you'd wanna. I mean it, I mean it.
No, I, I, no, I'll, I'll just put a lot of pressure on the Conservation Commission to come up with some valid studies.
Uh, motions were made, is, did anyone second that? You seconded. Kate did. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions, the motion carries. We have our two members. I would make a motion that the Parks and Recreation Committee and the Conservation Committee have the authority to appoint their representatives, three from Parks and Rec and one from Conservation, to this committee. You're second.
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 Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then for our next meeting, we would be interviewing for the member of the community, could be somebody from one of the leagues, probably their field director, or it could be someone else, but we'll, we'll take applications and get that out. The school committee would have the, the ability to appoint up to five members, and I'm not sure, Michelle is here and John is here, so they know that they've been shanghaied or volunteered for this position, but George Finn could wake up tomorrow morning knowing that he's been appointed to another committee. Okay. I think that covers us for this, this agenda item. Then the next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on the resolution amending Chapter 225, the Fee and Fine Schedule. We are going to have, I'm sure, a lot of discussion about this, but before we start on the athletic field piece of it, I wanted to see, I wanted to just focus on sort of the everything else, because I don't know, my sense is we probably won't have much from folks about the other pieces of it, but we might, so.
Mr. President, could I just kind of put a historic perspective on this?
Sure.
General comments?
Sure.
Since this was kind of, I began this, this battle. The Fee and Fine Schedule has not been, had a comprehensive revision since 1994. It's 25 years. I went back and I counted, there's well over 50 amendments to different pieces of, of the Fee and Fine Schedule. The department heads and I have been working on this for 18 months, trying to determine what's the right level. Some, some pieces have been neglected, some pieces are no longer necessary, and I think in the, what you received, you can tell where we've made changes and where we've deleted items. The bottom line is that the, the bottom line is that what we're trying to do is to just balance the Fee and Fine Schedule and to make sure it appropriately addresses the needs of the town. So as we go through this, if this question's about individual pieces, if, if I can't remember historically why we ended up where we were, I have a, a cast in the, in the back of the room that can, can help me out.
Okay. Great. I, I should also say that we've gotten, and I can tell we've all gotten a lot, because sometimes their emails are directed specifically to me and sometimes to the council as a whole, so we've gotten a lot of emails on this. And I appreciate that. I, I think a lot of the emails start out by saying, we really thank you for what you do, we appreciate your, your service, and then they'll go on and talk about their perspective on things. And sometimes there's the same theme, and sometimes there are other things that hadn't come up, and one of those I'll, I'll talk about at the end, just having to do with need-based type scholarships, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate the, the input from the public. Now, members of the council, I think Councilman Brier has something you might talk about.
Thanks, President Carroll. So I, I shared some amendments with everybody before, and I just wanted to speak to them. I respect and appreciate the work that went into the proposed changes, and I'm confident that the department heads and town manager have justifiable reasoning for the increases and decreases. My amendments reflect my views and the concerns I heard throughout last summer when I was out knocking on doors, and then with interactions I've had with people since. The concerns relate to more than just the single issue of the field fee, so I was gonna leave that to last anyway. But so the, there are four others that I just wanted to kind of read through the notes that I had written on them, and then we could discuss them each one by one. The first was just adding a word, adding pass, parking to the beach pass, just to clarify that it is, it's not access to the beach that we're charging for, it's just for the parking, so people can walk up, swim up, bike over, and, and there's still no charge.
And this is, let's try and just.
Oh, so, I didn't know where they were.
Beach parking.
Oh, is it, is it changed now to parking?
No, no, no.
Oh, yeah.
That's what you.
Yeah. So on the first page.
It's on the first page.
It's the very first change listed.
So between beach and pass, you would add the word parking for that?
Yeah. And then, so residence seasonal parking pass.
Mary, are you seeing that?
He has given me.
You've got it. Okay.
So the next one would be the bottom of page two for building permits. That's a more substantial change. The building, the proposed building permit fees would be a drastic increase. I understand it's the result of the fees not being changed for a long period of time, for several years, but without, but with both the valuation rates and the fee rate increasing at the same time, it would result in more than a 40% increase in any building permit. And so I was proposing just a staggered system. I have every confidence that the, the N number makes sense because it was studied, but I, I proposed kind of a three-year stagger to get there. It's in what I sent, but the specific numbers and how it's staggered aren't really as important as just the fact that it's spaced out, so that it isn't such a big increase in one year, and we can take time to make sure that we're not stifling construction. Because if we do, not only are we gonna make residents and business owners unhappy, but we'll also then not be creating more valuable properties that will then be taxed. So in, let me try to find, well, we can come, come back to the spizout numbers. The next is dog and cat licenses. In a discussion I had with Jim, with town manager, it just seemed that the cat licenses might not serve as strong of a purpose, and they aren't really enforced, so I figured if that's the case, let's eliminate the cat license. I'm a dog owner, so it doesn't impact me, but. Following, oh, I had, I had initially proposed that we do away with the fee for concealed carry permits, because it was my understanding at the time that the town doesn't really have discretion in whether or not to issue them. It's that if they, if, you know, boxes are ticked off, then we had to issue it, and that the Attorney General could use more discretion when issuing them. But in correspondence with Jim and the solicitor, learned that Chief DeCresenzo would be able to use discretion and set criteria. And so that fee is, is set as part of the state statute, so we can't change the fee, but there are municipalities that also assess an administrative fee for the work that goes into determining if one could be issued. So I'd like to explore whether or not we should be charging that administrative fee as well.
And I think for something like that, that's a, that's something that we could address later.
Separately.
We can always amend this.
Yeah.
Later in, in ask that we look into whether there's a need for an administrative fee for that investigation.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just initial, it's on the amendment I initially sent, because at that time it was canceling the fee altogether, so. Then the next is related to the field, so I can pause now if we want to discuss the others, or I could go right into that. That's a longer bit of writing.
Does anyone have any, any other suggested modifications to the Fee and Fine?
I do.
Other than fields?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I actually have a question about, on page three, refundable fee for decks and porches after final inspection, and, and actually, the refundable fee, can, can maybe Bob explain what, why these fees are refundable, and why the fee for decks and porches, refundable fee feels as if we're paying for them to put their deck in?
It's a method to get people to call for final inspections. It's a common problem where somebody's doing an addition, a pool, that they don't call for final inspections, and this is an incentive, so when we issue the permit for like, for a pool example, we charge an extra $100, it's a refundable fee, and if the person calls for the final inspection passes, we give them $100 back. It's something the council had passed years ago, this fee.
Well, that makes sense, so that.
Okay.
If you, if you want to say, I'm not gonna get the final inspection.
Right. There was no incentive for them to call for final, and there's so many permits being issued, and these things get passed, like, I'll, I'll go to a site like, two years later, and there's a pool and there's no fence around it.
Right.
And this, this is a method to, to get them to call.
So the refundable fee is something that they pay in addition to the fee.
Correct.
To take, to get the building permit.
Like, in our fee structure, when they're actually taking out a permit, if it's a deck, a pool, addition, you know, not a new house because they have to get a certificate of occupancy for that, but for those other items, like for a deck, for example, we want to make sure it's connected to the house properly, has proper railing heights and handrails and things like that, and.
Okay. That makes sense. I just needed a little, I thought you were giving them back the $50 that they put down.
They pay at the beginning and we give it back to them if they call and get.
But it's in addition to the $50.
Correct.
That they're paying for.
And if they, if they don't ever call, it gets waived after a year, and then the town gets the.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. The other has to do with the refuse bags. And I know that we learned about several months ago that we were no longer supplying refuse bags, and it, it bothered me a little bit at the time, because we use them, my, my family uses them. I know that they will not pick up solid wa, uh, solid waste, yeah, right. Yard waste, if it's in a plastic bag, so you are forced to use a, either a bin or a paper bag. And my family's always used the, the paper bags. There was, at the time, we were just told of this change. We weren't really given a background of why that, that change was made, and I just kind of let it slide until I got a call from a resident saying that they really missed being able to, to purchase those bags. And I talked at length with the resident, and we agreed that other bags that you buy at Lowe's or whatever are actually inferior to the bags that the, the town had purchased in the past. And it, it led me to believe that we might have an issue when the yard waste begins to be collected, which it isn't now, but in the spring, that there will be a lot of people who might be putting it out improperly, and it won't be picked up, and we'll have issues about that. So I guess I'm, I just want to at least be here the history of what led to that.
Sure. That was an operational decision. It's based on the amount of time and effort and cost that went into that operation with Public Works. You'll see in my budget that Public Works is undermanned, has been for a number of years. They can't get their primary mission done. I consider it something outside of their primary mission. It's a nice thing to have done, but we simply couldn't afford to do it. There's a cost in ordering the bags, there's a cost in storing them, in moving them forward into the office, in the, the clerks selling them, turning in the money. It's just something that, we're competing with Ace Hardware and Home Depot. It's not something that is typically what a community would provide or sell. I consider it a merchandise item that, quite frankly, we can't afford to continue to, to do because of what we're doing at Public Works and trying to get the rest of the job done. And Alan, I don't know if you want to address that at all, we talked about it in, okay. So it was, it was simply a cost savings measure for something that I felt was reasonable to allow our Public Works to be more efficient and not to be competing with businesses in the community.
Does anyone else feel?
I'm gonna jump in, because it has been brought to my attention by a couple of constituents that they miss not being able to get their bags at.
I, I received a number of phone calls. One was another Barrington tradition down the drain, was the quote. And I, I understand that there's a convenience to it, but if we're gonna run an effective and efficient operation, we need to do what our primary mission is. And selling trash bags out of the Public Works office is not what I consider my primary mission. That being said, if the council decides that that's something they want to do, there's a cost that comes with it, and we'll, we'll reinstate it. I, I think it's a minority that found it upsetting. I think everyone's up on Route Six or by, going by Ace Hardware, they're just picking up their bags somewhere else. And quite frankly, I don't think it's something that Public Works should continue to be And quite frankly, I don't think it's something that Public Works should continue to be doing.
Anyone else on the council feel, have a position on this?
I'm, I'm just going to say, I, I received emails about that as well. That being said, I, I think it's within the manager's discretion to make that call, but I, I do take to, take to heart the comments from the resident that, you know, this is the way we've always done it. And there's, there's importance to that. I get that, but.
I didn't get any calls. No, but, but I, I did want to just add, I, I understand the, the value in traditions like that, but at the same time, there is very little that, that can be cut, if anything, that people aren't going to feel. And if, I, I think this is one of the things where we have to say, for the greater good of, of efficient financial operations.
That was it. I agree with the cat, getting rid of the cat license. That's absolutely insane.
Most of the cats are scrawflops anyway. Okay. So I think, does anyone from the public want to be heard on something other than field? No. Okay, so I think we're ready to talk about the athletic field fees and related fees. And Councilman Breyer, you had something you want to say about that?
Yeah, it's something I've discussed a lot with a lot of people, so forgive if I go on a little bit long. So before getting to, to the amendment itself, I want to just comment on the, the process and the information. The topic of fees first came up during the summer, and had league leaders been involved in the conversation at that time. I think a lot of, of the information that's gone back and forth over the past several months could have been avoided, and I think we, there was some questionable information. As reported, it's true that most municipalities don't charge for the open youth leagues, but it's not accurate to say that Barrington is the only one that does, because some of the municipalities that didn't respond have explicitly told us that they do charge. But those other municipalities are charging for the elite leagues that they have, and they're charging much more than the ten dollars that we do. And many municipalities also require maintenance to be performed or the cost to be covered by the leagues using the fields, and, and that's not done here. I believe that Barrington should be providing quality fields for our youth and for everybody to play on, and I don't believe it's in line with the values of our town to make athletes responsible for bringing the fields up to the appropriate quality. But I also don't believe that adding money to the maintenance would, would solve the problem. The fields need more time to rest, and we need more of them. Though the town as a whole should invest in providing high-quality fields, a reserved, a reserve fee still is just, a reserved use fee is still justified. Athletic leagues significantly increase the town's expenses to maintain its fields, and all the fields in town are consumed exclusively by young athletes playing organized sports for a majority of the desirable time that they can be played on. This means that there's a substantial amount of time that the majority of residents and taxpayers are excluded from using the fields that they're investing in with their taxes. For those reasons, I'm proposing to amend the field fees to maintain the current ten-dollar fee, but to apply it to each registration. So an athlete playing two seasons would incur two ten-dollar charges for that league. They're doubly contributing to the maintenance costs and doubly excluding, doubly contributing to the time that excludes others from using the fields. But I also think that the youngest groups, the ones that are using the, the grass on the roadside, basically at, at Haynes Park and not the full athletic fields, they're not having lines painted on the fields or incurring additional maintenance needs by, with cleats and, and things like that. I think that there should be no fee charged for them. So doubling the, the multi-use fee, the double seasons incurring a double fee, but the youngest groups that aren't really impacting public use that much, having no fee, so the two would about offset, which keeps the cost, which keeps the, the expenses covered by fees to about, between 10 and 15 percent of the total cost, with taxpayers contributing the rest. I had also suggested that the, the tournament fee be adjusted to the lesser of either fifty dollars for the tier two and a hundred dollars for the tier one fields, or 110 percent of the direct costs incurred by the town, and the, the lesser of those two. But that for out of, out-of-town leagues that wanted to host a tournament here would be the proposed rate of the two hundred dollars for the tier one and one hundred dollars for the tier two. Separate from the amendment itself, but related, I do think that the, the capital reserve account should be maintained so that when we do have the opportunity to purchase a new field or to do a major renovation, that we should, we should have the, the funds available to execute that.
Anyone else on the council want to, are you?
No.
Want to be heard, or should we, would someone from the public like to speak to this issue? Okay. Please.
So I'm here on two capacities, which I'll speak to, I, I didn't speak to before, but some of my professional work was just talked about. Scott Pickering from Five Bittersweet Court. I'm here as a taxpayer and a resident, and I'm also here as a professional journalist, and it's a, it's a dual role. I've lived my whole adult life. I grew up in this town, I live here now, I have five kids going through the schools here and playing sports here. I've worked for the Barrington Times for 25 years, and I have covered this town in some capacity for 25 years. This forum, and the forum a month ago, where the first time ever in those 25 years, I've ever stepped out from the journalist role and spoken publicly in a public meeting at all. The article you referenced about field fees, I know, has gotten some attention and some opposition, and Mr. Carroll, I know you called our office today and, and were upset about it and thought it was wrong and refused to speak to me.
Hold on just a second. I was speaking off the record with one of your, one of your colleagues. If I'm talking off the record, you're now putting it on the record?
I'm, I'm not. I, I heard your comment, I was standing next to him, and I wanted to talk to you, but you wouldn't talk to me.
Okay, so that's how off the record works.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not talking about what you said, so. The only thing I'd just say is, for what, for whatever reason, this field issue caught my attention because it just seemed off, and, the field fees, and, and I couldn't make sense of it. And so I kept asking questions, we kept asking questions, and every time we asked the questions, we just didn't seem, the answers just didn't connect, and it just didn't seem to make sense for this town. So after the last workshop, I stepped away and I, I, as a resident, and as a journalist, I said, well, I wonder what other towns do. And so I began a pursuit that took three weeks and, and 50, 60 phone calls and 28 to 30 conversations in different towns, and got the information that was put out in the paper last week. And to be clear, the, because it's been challenged, the message was that the youth leagues around town, around the state of Rhode Island, don't pay the fees that Barrington charges, and I, and I appreciate what you just put forward, Mr. Breyer, because that was the essence of that story, that your, your little kids that are running around kicking a soccer ball or throwing a lacrosse ball, playing against their friends in their neighborhood house leagues, don't pay these fees throughout the state of Rhode Island. Barrington's the only community that does that, according to the research I've found. If there are others that didn't respond to me that do it differently, that's new, and I'd be happy to follow up and, and clarify that. But in the research I did, that's what I found. And it wasn't set out through an agenda, it wasn't through any bias, it was just in my role trying to answer questions, that's what I found. And, and that sort of integrity matters a lot to me, that my professional integrity. And, and so I stand behind what was put out there, and I know there's some who feel it was inaccurate, and, and I'm happy to correct the record if, if there isn't going to be corrected, but that was the, the reporting that went into that, and that, those were the answers I found. As an individual taxpayer and resident here, I've never been able to make sense of this structure of, of charging fees, because I think the decisions you make as a council, the programs you approve, fees, policies, taxes you impose, reflect the community's values. You banned plastics because this community cares about the environment. You took on tobacco because the community cares about young adults and teens. I've never understood why increasing field fees 300 percent made sense and reflected the values of this community. As a father, raising five kids, the number one conversation in our household is screen time. Video games and phones and other screens. We battle passionately, emotionally, it tears our family apart at times. I don't understand how putting in fees that create barriers to little kids running around playing sports is reflective of this community's values. And so we've asked a lot of questions, we've gotten confusing answers, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me, I don't see how it reflects the community's values, and I just ask you to consider that question, because it, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. There's not a financial incentive, there's not a financial reason that has made sense, there's not a capital improvement plan, although maybe after this committee does its work, there would be a really good one. At the time, we're sitting here now, it just seems like it was, well, it hasn't been done in a while, so let's do it. And it just, it just to me doesn't reflect what this community should stand for.
Anyone else?
So I had some thoughts on this after the last workshop. We had guy Ryan Jackson asked the question, if we don't charge for access to conservation land and we don't charge to go into the library, why do we charge for the athletic fields? And I think Jacob, you hit on it, which is it's, it's the right to exclude others. So I coached Little League, for example, and it's happened that I showed up at the field and someone was practicing their pitching. And once there were five or six of my kids ready to practice, I kind of had to politely say, sorry, but, you know, we have a practice. You know, he wasn't upset about it, and I'm not upset that I asked him, but that's why we charge for access, for example, to a meeting room in the library, because you can close the door and say, this is a private meeting, we're having a meeting, you can't be here. So in point of fact, we do charge for the library. And we charge all kinds of things, like a mooring fee, you know, someone monopolizes a piece of our harbor, and we, we charge for that. So I don't think there's anything inappropriate with the, with the idea of charging these fees. I've talked to folks around the state after I read that article, because I had sent a number of spreadsheets, permit applications, every town does it a little differently, and most of them indicate, yeah, we charge youth leagues for sports. Following up with phone calls indicates, yeah, not really the open leagues. Barerville, in fact, does. Barerville charges everyone. But it seems like the administrative hassle of some of these systems was just over the top. I mean, they were counting what percentage of the kids were from town, and then determining what field you were at, and then determining an hourly rate, in some cases as high as twenty-five dollars an hour. So I kind of did the arithmetic in my head, and that was for like, a premier league who wants to rent such and such a field. It worked out to like, 90 bucks a kid if you did the arithmetic. 10-week season, two 90-minute practices in a week, and then two or three hours for a game, right? So 90 bucks to play in the premier league, zero to play in the open league, and then you say, well, can we really say to ourselves that they're not charging a fee? If a kid plays zero in the fall and 90 dollars in the spring, it sounds like that's, that's a fee. So it doesn't bother me. But I think if you consider that what you're buying is the right to exclude other people, then what we're really charging is rent for our fields, which makes us a landlord. And landlords have to take into account a lot of things. I think, one, we have to take into account, we have good tenants, right? The leagues are very good tenants. Now, they trash the fields, there's no question about it, but that's a good thing, right? They could be not used, and we'd still have to take care of them because they're still public land. Parks and Rec saw this coming, talked about it before the middle school was torn down, said this is going to be a real struggle. And I think we all thought, they'll bear with us, they'll understand we're space constrained, the overuse of the fields is inevitable, and they're going to get beat up. But again, that's a good thing. What if no one were using them? Then we'd just be mowing the grass for no good reason. The other thing as a landlord is you, you can't delude yourself about the market value of what you're renting out, right? A landlord doesn't raise the rent to the tenant and then say, I'm going to use that money to make improvements to the facility that you rent. They make the investment, and then they raise the rent to recoup their investment. And I'm not saying we should look at this as a for-profit situation, it's not that. I mean, no matter what people say about the uncertainty of the numbers, no one can really question, we spend more taking care of the fields than we collect in fee revenue. There's just no question about that. But they shouldn't be equal either, because ultimately, the, the fields are public land. And as soon as we say that sports leagues pay the majority, or even the vast majority of the maintenance of those, well, then you kind of start to cede control from the public to the leagues. And it kind of happens already. You know, GPW has to rest fields sometimes, and St. Andrews, for example, has a field closed sign on it right now. Now, that's the result of the overuse of the field and the rehab of the field, but as a result of all that, we tell everyone in the town, don't set foot on that field, right? So it goes back to the appropriateness of charging a fee, which I think, yeah, that's justified. But raising it today, it doesn't raise a tremendous amount of revenue, really doesn't. I mean, we're estimating maybe another 50,000 in revenue. We have a capital reserve account that for present purposes is sufficient to take care of the fields, because Jacob, I think you said it, pumping money into them doesn't solve the problem. We can lay as much seed as you want, we can top dress, and come May, those seedlings are going to be crushed by little cleats. And again, that's a good thing. But dumping money into it isn't going to really improve it. So I guess I'm asking myself, why are we trying to raise 50,000 dollars, which in the scheme of things is a pretty modest sum, when as a landlord we got to say, our property's not in great shape, what we're providing to our good tenants that we want to keep around is just not what we hope to provide to them. And charging them this fee isn't, you know, we, we can't have any illusions. Charging this fee will not improve the fields, this year, next year, probably the year after that. So I just don't see why, why it really all needs to change that much. I don't have any problem charging a fee for each season. I think if you think about that, so my kid plays soccer and baseball, right? He pays for each season already because it's different leagues. If he played soccer and soccer, I don't know why he would pay half as much, still two seasons on the fields. I agree entirely with the idea that for any kid who gets a scholarship from the leagues, we shouldn't charge a dime, they should just give us a tally of that, because the league shouldn't have to come out of pocket for our field fees just because they gave a scholarship to a kid. And that's not to say that it, it might not be more than a few months before we say, time to reconsider it. We've made an investment of a field, it costs the taxpayers real money, and we want to recoup that investment. I just, I don't see that there's anything we're going to do today that we're trying to recoup. So I'd, I'd just hit pause on it. I don't think it's a bad proposal at all. It doesn't put me off, I'm not offended by it, but I just think there are, you know, there are justifiable reasons to say, we can make a change in one month if we want to, and we can just hold off for now.
I kind of completely agree with Steve. I was going to ask that the fee schedule be pulled out of tonight's vote, there, the sports fee be pulled out of tonight's vote. One of the things that struck me was at the, the athletic field workshop, someone asked, well, what's the big plan? Where, what is the plan for the fields? And that kind of struck a note with me, and I think President Carroll coming up with the ad hoc committee kind of helps to address that concern, so maybe we take a pause on this action tonight in order to kind of get what that plan is going to be, and maybe, you know, be reflective on the, on the charges then, so I. on the, on the charges then. So I, you know, am with Scott on, or with Steve on this.
I, I would echo that. I, I do think that paying per season makes a lot of sense. But I walked out of here from the workshop actually agreeing with TR on one aspect, which was the timing just didn't strike me as being good or valid, especially with fewer fields, knowing that the battle for the, just to make the schedule has to be brutal. Wait until we have fields up and running that are in great shape, and then revisit, revisit the fee increase.
The, as we've said, there's only so much you can do. The middle school construction took a major section of our fields offline and concentrated it elsewhere. I think there was a discussion about whether to cancel. Is that true in Parks and Recreation, whether to cancel certain season or something if, once we went offline?
There was a discussion about limiting each sport only to their primary season. It was perceived not to be fair to taxpayers to say, your kids can't play soccer in spring because that's a fall sport. Just didn't make sense. So, but going into that, we absolutely knew that the fields are going to be overused, and there's going to be no way to grow grass fast enough to keep up with it. That's not how grass grows, so.
So, you know, unfortunately, we're, we're in a spot where we can try to alleviate that, doing some temporary things. But we also need some longer-term solutions, and we're looking at those too. I want to kind of try and bring this back down to specifics. And, and if I could ask you to look, this, this topic is basically all about recreation fees, which is at the bottom of the fifth page, or the fifth page going on to the sixth. There's a lot that have been deleted. Youth basketball league, men's softball league per team, those are things that, why were those deleted, Jim?
The, the field, the adult leagues were built in down below, you can see on the, on the field rates. So instead of charging a per-season or, per-season rate, or per-person rate, we charged by the field per day.
Okay.
So i- if I can just, for, for a quick second, this, this discussion, as I said, began 18 months ago. And it really wasn't looking to the future, but looking to the present. And I, and it was done with, it was done with metrics. And Barrington is the only community in the state that does every, virtually everything for the leagues, to the point where Public Works are loading soccer nets and moving them around. Public Works paints the fields. They just don't maintain the fields. They, they do the operational cost of the leagues. When you look at what, last year, it cost $162,000 for Public Works to do the operational costs of the leagues. The fees came to $21,000, almost $22,000, which is 13%. So basically, the leagues were paying 13% of what it cost our community to run their leagues, to do the hard, the work, the maintenance, the moving of the nets, the painting of the lines, et cetera, et cetera. This fee increase, if it was taken at its face value as proposed, would only raise that percentage of what the leagues are paying to 44% of the operational cost. The taxpayers would be paying the other 55%, 56% instead of 87%. So it was really about trying to balance what we're currently doing. I recognize, as we all do, that we need to improve the fields. And that's going to happen with the new middle fields coming online, hopefully sooner rather than later, with perhaps some acquisition of land, perhaps some expansion at Haynes Park. We're looking at all kinds of things in the future, and that's what that committee will do. What I, what we were attempting to do with this fee change is just simply balance it a little more. When I met with the athletic leagues, I asked them, well, would you prefer that we just do away with the fees, like a lot of communities, and you take care of running your fields? You take care, we'll cut the grass and fertilize, but you take care of doing your lines and raking your infield and doing that. And they absolutely said, no, Public Works does a great job doing it. And I agree with that. I, I think Public Works should continue to do that. My question is, can we afford to continue doing it the way they're doing it right now, and having the burden of those leagues' operations fall on our taxpayers in general? Or should the leagues take on a, a bigger burden of the operational cost of their leagues? And that was the simple, that's the approach we took to it.
So we've got some proposals to, to basically keep things as they are now, although Jacob was also talking about eliminating the fees for some. So we wouldn't have level one, level two, if we, if we were just to maintain the status quo, we wouldn't have a level one or level two field. It would just be $10 a head as it is now. But for each season, that would be the change that I'm gathering folks are talking about. That's for the youth league rates. Do we have, I mean, for adult leagues, I guess we're charging 75 per day for level one and level two. We really, I haven't gotten any emails from anyone about adult leagues. It's all been about the youth leagues. Is anyone here interested in talking about the effect on adult leagues? So what's, what's our appetite for that? I mean, if we kept it as it was, the men's softball league is paying $400 per team. But if we, if we go sort of with a hybrid and we say, the youth league rates are $10 per registered athlete per season. In other words, if you're looking at the page six, we keep the youth league rates both at $10. And then for the adult leagues, we go with the proposal, which is $75 a day and $35 a day for level two field. Then we run it, then we get to the issue of the tournament rates. Jacob's suggesting 50 and 100, or 110% of the actual costs. I'm never crazy about doing the 110% or a percentage of the actual cost because that number can be kind of squishy, how much time was spent in the, in the office on this, what's the cost based, what's the percentage of the maintenance of this mower, the percentage of the purchase of this mower, the cost of the gas to bring this to. I'd rather just a flat number. In my mind, that makes things a lot simpler, just to have a flat number and say. I do know that East Providence charges, I think, $500 a field per day for tournaments, according to their website. So, and I don't know how it is done because it didn't appear, appear. What's the, what's the cost? How does the, you know, for the, the invitational, the Barrington Invitational Tournament, how do we charge for that?
I believe we charge the, the old field fee, which is what?
Michelle, is that correct? Is there anyone here from East Bay Soccer?
No. He, he emailed me and said that under the proposed fee structure, it would be $7,000 for the tournament.
Meaning if we went with $200 a day for level one and $100 a day for level two?
Yeah.
Because the tournament is three days, and we have, they use X number of fields.
Twenty-something.
Well, Jim nodded, so. Two days and.
[inaudible]
Okay. So, sure, Michelle, please. Oh, okay. Okay, so that.
Under this proposal, there would be, though.
Under both proposals?
Because it's outside of their season, as far as our definition.
Somebody come to the mic.
Can you, can, I'm sorry, can you come forward?
Can Michelle come up as well?
First of all, when you're talking about a tournament, are you talking about people from out of state or, or across the state coming to use Barrington's fields? Is that, or is it a tournament within the town leagues?
So there's a Barrington Invitational Tournament that the soccer league hosts, and soccer teams from outside the state, inside the state, and our own local Barrington teams all play in that tournament.
Okay. And what, what is that charge at this point?
You don't know those numbers. But you think there is a charge?
I was under, I would have to go back and confirm, so I'm not 100% certain. I was under the impression.
As I understand it, the league always considered that part of their seasonal fee, so there was no charge for the tournament. Is that correct, Michelle? I said, as I understand it, the leagues considered the invitational tournament as part of their season, and therefore they paid no tournament rate. Is that?
They have never completed a land application form or paid any money to the recreation department. I'm just hearing from John now that there are some fees for lining fields and providing barrels that they, that DPW keeps paying.
Okay. So John, could you, do you have a sense of what does that?
All it is, is just a one-time fee, just for the tournament. They, we basically keep track of, we drop off a dumpster for them, the, the fields that we paint for them extra than what's already there, trash barrel liners, recycling bins, we drop off at all the fields. We keep track of those moving goals for them. We put some man-hours, and then we just basically give them a bill at the end. It's usually around, I think the last two or three years, it averaged around $3,000.
Okay, okay. So that, that kind of explains your feeling that there was a fee.
It might. So then the question is, with this proposal, if we're going to charge a per-field fee, are we going to be paying those fees in addition to this per-field fee per day that is on the proposal?
No, I, not in my, not in my view, but.
If you're going to have a field fee, I think that should cover the cost of those things, except for maybe materials such as bag liners and porta-johns and those types of things that go beyond the field.
Well, we could, I mean, if we had enough of a fee, we could just say that, that would cover it. It depends on, so the dumpster, is that our dumpster, or do we rent that?
Yeah, it's a town dumpster. And we also dispose whatever trash they throw in there with just tipping fees we have to, we're responsible for. So there's, it's an added cost. So we take care of all that, and then we just add it to the bill. But Michelle is right, there is no actual fee for, for the fields they use. That's all it, it's basically part of their season right now. Where, under the new proposal, I believe there would be something added.
A porta-john is $100 a day, $95 a day. So, you know, and the proposed fee, or the proposed reduction in the fee, that would cover the porta-john alone. We don't put one at every field, we, you know, group them together. But what I'm saying is there's some additional costs that go along with that.
Maybe it makes sense to just keep it as it is for now, in terms of looking at the, if, if you collect the actual costs.
Of porta-johns as well?
The porta-john, the porta-johns are a little separate because sometimes what we use for soccer, usually like, we shut the water down at Cheneze, let's say, the bathrooms there, because they have their tournament so late in the season. Sometimes it gets a little iffy with the weather. There's no heat in the building. So we shut down the building, we'll put a porta-john there for them. We'll take on that cost. If, the weather permitting, if it's not needed, we don't use it. So depending what the, their needs are at the time. But yeah, there's been added costs of porta-johns. And also, like at St. Andrews, soccer field there, there's been porta-johns there at time, at their request.
Okay.
I, I would think that, I mean, this is, Joy sort of leaned over and I think has a very good idea, which is just, let's just cut this out for now. And, you know, there's no tournament that's going to be played in six inches of slush. We have time to.
I think, I think they have played in six inches of slush.
We have time to nail this down over the next month or two or whatever. But, you know, implement the rest of this fee schedule and.
Carve out the, the tournament piece specifically?
I would say essentially, just, just the whole, just the whole rec piece, you know, will not be changed tonight. And come back to it after we've scratched our heads on how you want to deal with tournaments and such. Adult leagues, you know, they're not playing until the spring anyway, softball and such, so.
Registration's already open for all of the spring, spring leagues, so it's.
Closed.
Closed, closed for the spring league, so, yeah.
So, but what about the question of the multiple seasons? Do you want to make that change and leave everything else as is?
I think that makes a whole lot of sense.
I think it makes perfect sense, but I think we're not, we're not going to have multiple seasons come up in the next month. You're only going to have with, with spring.
But registration will open for the fall, probably before we decide it, if we don't decide it tonight.
I mean, we could do it in April, or we could do it tonight. I, I just feel like we're going to get bogged down in details that we haven't really thought through at this point, because whether or not we were going to pump the brakes on this thing was uncertain until we sat down.
And it would be, it would be good to know what the, what the costs really are for a tournament, as opposed to what this, this proposed field per day, just to see, I mean, you said $7,000, he said it costs about $3,000. I mean, that, that's.
Well, the 7,000, that referred, the 7,000 referred to, if we, if we adopted the $200 a day, $100 a day for level two field, they're estimating that that, that would be the, the cost, according to youth soccer, for that tournament.
That would be the, yeah, the total fee, not the cost to the town.
I think this is why, like, just pulling it all off for tonight, I think that it just gets.
I think we need more information.
Yeah. And I don't know whether it might be some, you know, putting the fees in the ad hoc committee kind of realm as well, just because it doesn't seem like the information. I think Parks and Rec has a good start on that information, but it certainly seems like there's all these questions out there, like, what is these tournaments? And I don't know, that's just.
Well, I think Jacob said, you know, people are going to start registering for the fall, so I, I want to address this at our next meeting. But I'm okay with the idea that we pull the rec, from recreations fees to room rentals. We keep room rentals as is, but the recreation fees, we will address at our next meeting. Does that make sense to everyone? I think we're going to have to go through this.
Yep.
I think it, I think it does. The only thing is, I think we've, we should perhaps, and I'd hate to throw it back in there, deal with the scholarship issue.
Yeah, yeah. I want to address that. So are there any presidents, there was one president from the league here. Would you mind coming forward? Just wanted to ask you a question. So one of the emails that, that I got, and I think, or more than one of the emails got, that we got, talked about the issue of folks who may not be able to afford this. And my understanding is that now the, the leagues kind of absorb that. They'll offer a scholarship, you know, quietly if someone says, we'd like to play lacrosse, but I just can't afford these fees for my child. And is that, is that how it works? That the, the league would absorb the cost of that person?
That's correct, yeah. We review, we get applicants, a very basic application process to say that I'm in financial need, they need to give some. need, they need to give some, you know, limited information. It's not shared broadly, obviously, and we make a determination as a board that we're going to apply certain funds to scholarships for a group. It's not a set number, it's not, you know, 10 every year, or something like that. We look at who applies, and we look at our ability to cover. If there's 15, and we can, we can't cover the whole thing, we cover a percentage for everybody who applied. If it's a smaller number, we cover a larger percentage.
Okay. Is that the kind of thing that, it would be helpful to you if the town were to, let's say, partner in that scholarship? If you offer a scholarship to an individual, then, then the league doesn't have to pay for that person's, or are you not doing that now? Do you know?
What do you mean, not paying? We, we don't submit the number of people to the town for the $10 head, per head fee, you mean?
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I don't, I mean, it's a handful of people, I don't know that we're, it, it wouldn't make a difference either way, I don't know that we're, they get counted in our head count, so we probably are paying the $10 for them right now. That would be nice if it gets waived, I don't think it's going to make a huge difference, to be honest.
Okay.
If you want to pay the full scholarship, that would be great.
I, I think, so, I thought that was a good point that, that someone made, I wanted to make sure that I understood how that was going. I mean, we want to support the folks in town who want to play the sports, even if they might not be able to afford it. So, I'd suggest that we add language to the fee and fine schedule that would allow us to partner with the leagues in waiving the fees. Now, I tried to work out kind of the language, so that, trying to do this in a, in a kind of informal way, it's hard to be informal about it, but we don't, I don't want to have a situation where people feel like they've got to produce their fine, you know, their, their tax returns, or, or something like that. I think we can be pretty informal about it, but in order to do that, I think, I'd like to give some discretion to maybe the town manager, or whoever. So, this is my suggested language to add. "If requested by the league or by a resident, the town council or its designated shall have the right, but not the obligation, to waive youth recreation fees on the basis of individual financial hardship and as part of a scholarship offered by a youth recreation league. Such scholarship recipient shall not be required to pay any fees or cost to the league. Proof of financial hardship need not be presented." So, the reason that I put it in that way is just to make sure that you, I mean, you're not really going to question people that, on the other hand, I don't want somebody showing up in a Lexus and asking for $10 off, or, or something. I don't think that happens. But proof of financial hardship need not be presented. Also, I, I added the language, "Such a scholarship recipient shall not be required to pay fees or cost to the league." We want to partner with the leagues in offering the scholarship, but we don't want to give everybody a $10 break, and they pay all the other registration fees to the leagues.
Right, so, would the, in the instance that I gave before, where we do a percentage sometimes, where we look at, and we look at what we have in our budgets, and if there are more people, we want to help the group that's coming to us, and not pick and choose some, but not others. We cap it at a percentage of the, of the fee that we'll cover for them, but we don't necessarily knock the whole thing off, as long as they're getting some, something from us, or our standard percent, now, I'm not speaking for the other leagues, obviously, I don't know how they do it, or maybe you cap a, a X number of people from each league, you might pull the leagues to get a sense of what the past few years have been, what it looks like. Again, ours are roughly a handful, soccer may have, you know, a dozen, I have no idea. But would it have to be a full scholarship to get that partnership from the town, or just the scholarship and the format that we give it?
I'm just writing new language as we're talking, because that makes sense, so... Or, "It's designated to waive youth recreation fees on the basis of individual financial hardship and as part of a scholarship offered by a youth recreation league, and in the same proportion as the league provides to the scholarship recipient." Does that make sense?
Sure.
I'd just suggest a change to that. I don't want to start collecting, you know, 60% of $10. Why don't we just say, if it's, you know, if the league provides more than a 50% scholarship, we don't charge the fee.
Okay, yeah.
I can tell you, I, I've spoken to the Little League president about this, he, he estimates on an annual basis, it really doesn't change from about 5%. You know, some years are up, some years are down, but it's about 5% of the kids. I think their practice is just, and I'm not sure of this, but I think their practice is just 100% scholarship.
Mr. President, if I could, I'm not sure any of the leagues are hurting for money. Last time I asked the Soccer League, they had $300,000 in the bank. That being said, I thi, I think helping out when there's an exceptional circumstance makes all the sense in the world, but could it be simpler if the league president simply sent a memo to the town manager that said, "I've got the situation where we would like to waive the fee for however many boys," and just let it go with that? And, you know, and not make it more complicated than it, than it needs to be?
It was feeling a little bit like we were creating a solution to a problem that might not even exist. I, I think your recommendation makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I, I think the issue does exist, there are folks who can't afford it, and they get taken care of by the leagues, and the question is whether we want to help.
But if, if it's sent, if, if you just send a head count to...
If, when we're submitting our numbers for the year, we submit with that the number of people who are scholarship, right? So, each year, we have to submit to pay the $10, and so there are, you know, 295, and there are five scholarship on top of that. I mean, just include it in the numbers when we submit it to pay.
Yeah, okay, that, that makes sense. I just want to...
For the wording, so for the wording, what if the fee is $10 per paying registered athlete?
Well...
Like, rather than a whole new clause, like, we're only charging the $10 for the athletes who are paying to register?
But some of them are paying half, so I guess that's the thing, and so, yes, Michelle?
In Barrington here, we use an honor system for the paying of, for registrants, for leagues. So, when someone comes in from the league and gives me a check, I just accept that check as their payment for whoever should be paying. So, there's no, there's no, I mean, obviously, I can divide by 10 and come up with, you know, the number of children, but there's no way for me to know if they just don't put in children that have gotten a scholarship, it's really all the same, it's an honor system.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right, we're not talking about adding that complexity, I just want to give the manager the authority to waive those fees.
So, per athlete paying 50% or more?
I think it also would be good to have a record of that number.
Yes.
As, when I did football and baseball on that aspect, everything was always kept hush. So, if we knew somebody that couldn't afford it, they played, nothing else was said. A lot of people have pride in town.
No, I agree.
You know, so, as for what you're doing, I suggest that it's a good gesture, but I don't think it should happen. Let the leagues handle it the way that they handle it now. I don't know about lacrosse, I can only speak for football, and when I did baseball, so that's how we did it. And on the other hand, you're talking about removing the fees off the record till next month. How are the people supposed to know what they're paying if the registration fees are coming up in the next month?
Well, the, the new fee schedule is going to have to take effect at a time when they, you know, we can't, we're not going to be able to get to the spring session.
Can I suggest tableing it until we figure out what our fees are going to be when we redo the fields, and then come up with the, the fee structure?
You may find that it comes out to be exactly what it was, but the, the question of, there are things in there that we've deleted, and so we want to address those.
So, if we leave everything status quo for now, until we come up with the solution on the fields, then come back to the fee structure?
Yeah, I, I want to address it, it may, it may not be much of a difference between leaving it as is, but we're cleaning up a lot of the other things that didn't need to be in there.
But on the scholarship stuff, I would just let the leagues handle it themselves and not get involved.
Yeah, okay.
It's a good gesture, but that's how we used to do it. Everybody knows who can afford and who can't, basically, that are in charge of the leagues, and they usually just take care of it.
Yeah. Please.
I, I would also advocate the proposal to not do anything for the scholarships, just what he was saying, let the leagues handle it, because I'm not president on soccer leagues, so I actually don't even know how many people we offer scholarships to. It is more of a hush, hush, kind of quiet thing that gets done, and we offer it when people ask for it, but it's not something we want to really advertise in any way, because it is a personal thing to whomever's receiving those scholarships.
Sure. Okay.
I would, I absolutely understand the, the privacy of it, but I think actually it might be helpful to, for the administration to know, when setting fees, that there are, how, how many people, you know, actually can use the scholarship? I, I think that's, that's, that's important information, because people always assume that this town is, everyone's part of the 1%, and it'd be nice to, you know, come out with the, the real, the real deal. I just think it's, numbers are good.
Why don't we do it this way, in terms of, I mean, the, the leagues are doing it a certain way, we'll ask if the town manager can reach out to the league presidents and just get a kind of ballpark sense of what it's been on average, we'll be able to look at that. The way that I'm sort of looking at this, I do know that East Bay has some dollars in the bank. When we have, when we went through the exercise of looking at other, other towns and how they do it, one of the things that I saw in a couple of towns was that they do partner with their leagues. So, for example, in East Greenwich, the Little League put, put funds into, the town was redoing a field, the Little League put money in to build dugouts. So, they partnered on those capital improvements.
And that, that has been done on occasion, I know Little League, I think it was last year, paid for an infield to be re-sotted and redone. So, I, there is some of that going on, certainly that we'd like more.
And I think if we can get the report and recommendations from this ad hoc committee, among those things, we could say, here's a, here's an item, here's a, a field, we've been looking for real estate to, to acquire, it's not easy to find in Barrington, we're pretty well-developed, but if we found something where we felt like we could participate with the leagues, maybe that'd be an option, too. And I think, I could be wrong, but I sense, I sense a willingness of the leagues to do that, they want to have good fields, they want to have a place for the kids, but we can address that when we get the reports and recommendations. So, back to the...
Mr. President, if I could, just one thing to consider, as you talk about fees at whatever level they're set, I think one thing that needs to be addressed is the inequity in the fields, the different conditions of the fields, and that's exactly why we built in the Level 1 and 2. A kid playing at Sherwood is on a completely different field than a kid playing at Bicknell. And, you know, as we build the fee structure at whatever level you think appropriate, I think breaking out two levels of fields, and hopefully, all those Level 2s are going to slowly move up to Level 1, but in the meantime, we, I, I would think it'd be fair if we had some kind of a structured fee schedule.
My sense from the councils, they want to talk about this at a later date, and so I'm going to...
I understand.
Put it on the agenda for next month to address the recreation fees. That still leaves the other fees to talk about, and before we go through a motion, I'll just give you my views, try and get a head count, the, adding the language of parking, I think that's pretty innocuous, I don't think anybody would have a problem with that, for the beach pass. Jacob also mentioned the, the building permit fees, in some cases, those are going from 70 to 80, 60 to 70, 40 to 50, 5 to 6 per $1,000, and then 50 to 75 for enclosed additions. I don't know.
I have a little bit of a problem with that, I'm not really sure why, but raising them incrementally, you know, sort of punishes the person who's, you know, who waits to, to build. I, I, I don't know why, these fees are going to affect new, new construction, and...
And renovation.
And renovation, but I'm just not sure why phasing it in, it seems like more of a problem to...
If I remember our conversation, and Bob can help me with this, I think even with those raises, these fees are very conservative compared to many other communities.
For example, like, an addition, I think we have a minimum fee of $50, is it on there?
Yes, minimum, that's right, right now it's 50.
For, for an addition, somebody, building addition on the house, they put down, I'm building this addition for $5,000. I have to do a plan review, I have to check it for zoning, I have to do a foundation inspection, a rough framing inspection, insulation inspection, a wallboard inspection, a final. Sometimes you have to do two rough framing, so I'm going out there six or seven times for $50 for the town, and the town's not making money.
I would agree, I, I would say yes, just the charges...
The other is, you know, the $60 per thousand, or whatever it is, that's, that's what we're saying, it costs for a square footage price to build a house. Nobody's going to build a house for $60 a square foot, they're spending $150 a square foot. These are, like, you know, and plus, like, I'm basically a one-man office, and I'm going to be retiring shortly, they're going to probably have to get another couple of the people in the office, and you're not going to have the funds to run the office properly.
No, I, I agree with you, I, I don't know if you understand that.
Okay, I'll just explain why the fees need to be increased.
I don't, I don't agree with this incremental increase, I think we should just increase the fees.
I'm inclined to do that, too.
Yes. Recommended by the manager.
My, I mean, my gut is that...
Thanks, Bob.
It would be, I'm fine with the increase, I, I wonder whether the increase isn't a little modest. I mean, we've spent a long time tonight talking about problems that result from all the development. You know, other places, you build a house, you pay an impact fee...
Right, absolutely.
To get field space.
Right.
You know, so I, I, I think we should, we should accept these increases, and maybe look into this, whether we're behind the curve on this.
I completely agree.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll withdraw that. Okay, and then the next one is the elimination of cat licensing, which I'm...
Absolutely.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, let's not eliminate cats.
If you eliminate the cat fee, so, a license is $5, for a dog, it's really $6, and it's because you charge a dollar more for the cat program. That's why a dog is $6, and a cat is $5.
So, you charge...
So, the dogs pay for a cat to be...
That seems very...
I hope the word doesn't get out, we have a problem. I think if you just eliminate cat and tap dog license, all the fees can apply the same, and the dollar can still go to cat neutering and those other things that it's used for.
Actually, I got a lot of angry emails from dogs about this.
The dogs themselves call it...
They wanted the bags, too.
We, we will pull back the arrest warrant for former councilman Premiano, who has an unregistered cat, self-admitted.
That was a matter of principle for him, and he was willing to serve time if necessary. Okay, so I think that was, those were the, the modifications. So, modifications will be to add... to add the word parking between beach and pass, resident seasonal and pass, and resident senior should say parking pass, 65 and older, and then beach and pass below that. Do you have that, Mary?
Yes.
Okay. And then, for purposes, Jacob withdrew that, so we'll leave the building permits as they were, and then we'll delete the words and cat license, so, and cat, so dog, it'll just be a dog license. And then we will maintain, we will accept none of the recommended changes for this month on the entire category of recreation fees, and all the way down to room rentals. And I think that's it. Do you have that?
What about, what about the guns?
No, we're going to leave the guns as is, because there's state law on that, and...
And we're going to look at an admin fee, look at other communities and see if they have an admin fee for concealed carry.
That's a good idea.
I've always thought that if anyone owns a gun, they ought to have to buy insurance to do with a car, but that's a national issue.
I think that's a good thing to go to.
So, with those changes, do I hear a motion to accept the resolution amending Chapter A 225 as modified?
So moved.
Or seconded?
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, and thanks to all the folks for staying for this. Next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on resolutions. The first one is a resolution in support of enabling legislation for municipal tobacco licensing. This was presented to us by Central Falls, I think, and the, the issue was, we lost our case at the trial level, where we didn't actually have licensing, but we had increased the tobacco age to 21. We are appealing that case. Central Falls has asked, has suggested a resolution to our representatives and to the General Assembly, that towns be permitted to license the sale of tobacco products. And since we were in favor of that, I thought, you know, the first time around, it would make sense for us to pass our own supporting resolution. So I think you folks see the resolution in front of you. Any questions or concerns about it?
I think it's good that there are that many cities and towns who have joined in the resolution.
Yeah, and that are.
That would like to license.
And I do know that Senator Koin, our senator, has already introduced her Tobacco 21 bill that she introduced last year, which would raise the age in Rhode Island to 21. So, do I hear a...
I had a note, but now I'm trying to find where it was. Wondering about the recipients, the list of recipients for that resolution, where it gets sent?
It's, I don't think it's listed in here, but...
Yeah, I can't find it now, so...
We typically send it to the leaders in the General Assembly, to our own reps, but also to the Speaker of the House and President of the Senate, and to the governor. Okay, here it is. So we should say, sent to the Rhode Island House and Senate Representatives of the Town of Barrington, to the leaders of the House and Senate. Can we add that language, Mary, at the end? Is that, that's what you're looking at?
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
Be it further resolved, the very last line?
If you look at the next one, the utility emergency response bill?
Okay. Yes.
Is that what you want?
Yes, please. Could we just insert that?
Yep.
Into the, okay. With that modification, is everyone looking at that? You can see the next one that says, okay. With that modification, do I hear a motion to adopt the proposed resolution on tobacco?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next one is on...
Aye. I didn't vote, because the, the one difference between these two is that the legislation for municipal tobacco licensing was also to be sent to every city and town council in Rhode Island, and that is not...
It is. All the cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island.
Oh, okay, sorry. Didn't read far enough. Sorry.
So this next one is to support utility emergency response bill. This is Senate Governor McKee. Jim, do you want to just give us a kind of overview?
Yeah, this is an accountability bill for utility companies. As we all know, there's been a number of problems with keeping them. Last year, when we had a problem in town, our point of contact wouldn't answer his cell phone, and went to voicemail that was full. And thankfully, we had Andrea, who works the national grid, that we became our point of contact by default. But what this does is it requires them to man a post at the Rhode Island EMA Operations Center, it requires them to have a liaison with each community to report power outage updates three times per day, and it's, it's just trying to hold them accountable, and there'd be, you know, appropriate penalties for not doing it.
Makes sense to me.
Jacob, any thoughts on this?
I'm going to vote.
Okay. We hear a motion to adopt the resolution in support of utility emergency response bill, SO 261, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions and one recusal. Thank you. The next item is to discuss an act on bids, and the Recreation Department has a bid for, this is for Bernard Wilson, this is at Walker Farm, right? This is the fellow who owns the house next to it and...
Next door, and he did it last year, and the business did okay. We expect it to grow, but we think it's a great opportunity to allow people that don't own boats to drive down there, rent a kayak, and to stay out, head out into 100 Acre Cove. And it's really at no cost to the town, and it's a nice recreational resource.
Do I hear a motion to award the bid to Bernard Wilson, 509 County Road, Barrington, Rhode Island, DVA, Walker Farm Kayaks Concession for April 1, 2019, through November 30, 2021, with an annual fee of $325.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to award the bid to Tricon Contractors.
This is for, oh, this is for the Bay Spring Community Center roof and siding. I think one of the issues here was just trouble finding folks who would do it, because they had to follow, what was it, prevailing wage, where if you, if you called, I guess, the roofing doctor or something like that, you wouldn't necessarily get that.
Yeah, this is a rebid from the fall. In September, we went out to bid for the same services, and we had no interest, even though calling people and everything. We rebid it, we took away the bond requirements, but we still have prevailing wages, and being a government entity, we have to follow those through by law. So, we did get one bidder, he has done work for the town before, and he's very good. He's a town resident, and we're recommending Tricon Contractors, Inc. He's actually under what we estimated for the job by over $10,000, so it's a good price. And like I said, he's done work for us before and done a very good job.
And this is a long time coming.
Yes, it is. It's due.
This was on the SIP last year, and we put it out to bid last year and couldn't get anyone, so we had to hold off till spring. But there's, there's a potential for some growth work, that's why Alan's put in a 15-point contingency. We've had to do some work on that roof, and we suspect that as they pull shingles, there may be a little extra work on that, so it should be covered.
Right. Just a question about, I noticed in the bid it's for vinyl siding. Did we price it out for alternatives to vinyl?
I did price it out for the Cedar Impressions vinyl siding, and it was going to be quite a bit more, it was going to be over budget, so I stuck with the vinyl siding. I didn't look at re-shingling, because I'd have to remove everything and re-shingle again. What it's going to be is, they're going to rip the roof shingles off, overlay with half-inch plywood, new felt, ice shield where necessary, all the ridges, the vents, and then architectural roof shingles, similar to what's there, the black shingles. The siding, we will have them put half-inch insulation board over the existing siding, and then vinyl siding, and wrapping all the trim in aluminum, similar to our house. We felt that this would give it the best bang for the buck, it's, you know, all good quality products. We specified everything, right down to the thickness of the vinyl and everything. But I do agree, you know, actual replacement of cedar with cedar would have been nice, but it is high maintenance, and it's something that, we try to do something that would last for a while with very little maintenance.
Any other questions for Alan?
I didn't notice that.
I knew it would bother you.
That is an historic building.
I wonder if the answer in the short term isn't that the vinyl will protect the building, and hopefully some other council someday finds a way to...
Hmm.
I don't know, I mean, I, it gave me a lot of pause, I just, I don't like the idea. Do we know what the differential in cost would be?
For cedar shingles, you might double the price for the siding itself. The breakdown in the cost for the roof alone was about $25,500, for the siding was $32,200. I'd estimate probably another $20,000 to do the cedar, at least, because you're going to rip it all down, and yet you're going to redo it. And like I said, we're hoping with the insulation it'd give us a little more of an hour value, because I don't know what's in those walls. But then, once again, if you go with the cedar, then you're going to have to paint every few years, there's a lot more maintenance to it, so. I mean, it is something, I mean, you do have the option, if you wanted to just award the roof and have the roof done now, and then defer the siding to next year when more money's available, I mean, it is an option. We did break up the bid so that people would bid just the roof and the siding, and give us two numbers. I do have the cost for the vinyl Cedar Impressions siding, which is vinyl siding, but it's, it looks like actual shingles. That would have cost an additional $13,200 on top of the bid.
I've seen that, that's surprisingly realistic.
Yeah, it does look nice, but...
How much did you have left? How much were you under, the $75,000?
Yeah, it would have been, we have $70,000 for the contract itself, so we would have been over budget. But I'm also concerned, once we start opening things up, we're going to find things, and, so that's why I was a little nervous as far as going ahead with that.
Oh, yeah. I've owned an old house, and I know that whenever the contractors start, they say, "I've never seen this before," and you end up paying for something.
But if you, if your intention was not necessarily to paint the shingles, but just, you know, let them...
Oh, we could, that's an option. I mean, like I said, if you wanted, we could award the roof now, delay on the siding, and then revisit that next year, it's an option.
Having just experienced it with my own home, the shingles do need to be treated on a regular basis, so they start to ridge, they start to eat away and get ridged between the soft and the hardwood grains, so you do still need to treat the cedar shingles.
Right, but...
I mean, I'm okay with the idea that we just do the roof, and then let's, let's just get pricing on it, you know. I, what about, I don't know if this is anathema, but the idea of cement board, or some of those, like, very permanent, long-term, low maintenance, but sort of...
They do look better, I have to say.
I don't know what cement board should...
That's a big building to put vinyl siding on.
I just think when it's re-sided, I think we'll be surprised how nice a looking building that is, and we might regret wrapping it in vinyl.
In vinyl?
Right. Like, I mean, I can picture it with cedar shingles, notwithstanding the maintenance, saying, "That really looks good."
With which?
With cedar shingles.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, we're depriving ourselves of the opportunity to sort of...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
So let's separate this out, let's do the roof, and then for next month, do you think you could try to get us a sense of the cost on alternatives?
Yeah, I can call, I can ask this contractor here, what he would think. I do think it's going to be outside our budget, or what we have available now, and it may be have to something next year, let's say, next fiscal year.
Let's see how much it's outside.
I can give you the options, so, forward them to Jim and go from there.
Great.
But the roof alone is $25,500. I would recommend still a, at least a $4,500 contingency, just in case we hit something once we, we're going to take the old cupola off that's falling apart, it's caving in, actually. We're going to sheath over it and then seal it all up, so. But, like I said, once again, I just don't know, that's original wood.
So you think $29,500 would...
I'd recommend at least $30,000, you know, and then go from there.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Town of Barrington to award a bid to Tricon Contractors, Incorporated, 146 Anoka Avenue, Barrington, for $30,000 plus, no.
For up to $30,000.
For up to $30,000 for the Bay Spring Community Center roof, as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for bringing that to my attention.
Next item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing on Ordinance 2019-2, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 185 Neighborhood Restaurant. Public hearing has been continued to April 1, 2019. Do we have a, do we need a motion to do that, Mike? Should we make a motion to continue it?
We do need to have an actual motion continuing it, otherwise we would have to re-advertise, so if you could make that motion.
Okay. Will anyone make the motion to continue the public hearing to April 1?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next is to introduce Ordinance 2019-8, an
ordinance amendment to Chapter 179 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 179-1, One Way Streets on Waldron. This would allow for partial during the day, one-way street. And at this point, we need to make a motion to introduce that and set the public hearing. Will anyone make that motion?
I so, I so move.
Well, I think we have to say the public hearing date, too, so. Do you have the motion written down?
Yeah. Oh, I'll make a motion to introduce...
Yeah. I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2019-8, Amendment to Chapter 179 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 179-1, One Way Streets, Waldron, and schedule a public hearing for April 1, 2019.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions. The motion carries. Next one is, this is, which one is this for, Steve? Is this for...
Yes, so this is a recommendation, unanimous recommendation of the ADHOC Tax Exemption Committee to raise the veterans exemption from $300 to $330. That would apply to veterans and their widows, and then for veterans disabled in the line of service, it would be an additional $300, up to $330 now. So total, if you're a fully disabled veteran or the widow of one, it would be $660. If you're a veteran or widow of a veteran, it would be $330.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2019-9, Amendment to Chapter 169 Taxation, Article 8 Military Service Related Exemptions, and schedule a public hearing for April 1, 2019.
A second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we've introduced those two, and the next thing is the BYOB licenses. I am opening the public hearing into 2019-6, an amendment to Chapter 63, BYOB licenses. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? Seeing no one from the public wanting to be heard on this, does anyone on the council have any questions or concerns about this?
Got a question.
Sure.
I'm looking for the item letter, but the reasoning why, why a BYOB establishment couldn't have a party, basically. So if I wanted to have my birthday party at a restaurant that's operating as a BYOB, I wouldn't be allowed to bring my alcohol to the, to the venue, because it would be serving more than one table of people. And I was just wondering the reasoning for that restriction.
Which, you're pointing to which one?
Well, now I'm going to have to find it.
It looks like I on page four.
So we charge a car catch fee.
Okay.
It's a large quantity of alcohol.
Mike, I think your office drafted this?
Yes.
Is this based on another town?
It is. Looking at paragraph I, correct?
Yeah.
Right. And, you know, I guess that just is in there in terms of the spirit of what it is that you are trying to accomplish. There's nothing magical about that. If you want to delete it, you can. It can always be amended if it gets abused at some, you know, future point. But this was just more, again, in the spirit of what you were trying to accomplish.
Okay.
Is this standard language in other BYOB, other towns?
Well, believe it or not, you would only be the second town to adopt a BYOB ordinance. So it's, it's a language that came from another town. We did modify it, you know, a bit, but so I can't tell you that there are 37 other BYOB ordinances out there.
Wow. Is it Providence?
Johnston.
Because there was a, there, I remember there was a BYOB restaurant on Hope Street in Providence.
Right. There are lots of BYOB restaurants elsewhere, but they're not regulated.
So that's the thing. The question is not whether, as it stands now, there could be BYOB in Barrington. There's just no prohibition or regulation of it. And so the issue was that, sent to the Economic Development Committee, was whether we wanted to prohibit or allow, and if we're going to allow, do we want to regulate it in any way? And they looked at a number of things about it, and one of the things that I thought was important, and I think that they mentioned, was the idea that other, if you have a liquor license, you have training on serving and so forth. You're also required to have liquor liability insurance. So if somebody leaves the BYOB place and they are severely intoxicated and there's an accident, there's, without regulation, they wouldn't need to have liquor liability insurance. It'd be a good idea, but they wouldn't be required to. And so severe injuries resulting, you wouldn't have, you know, you wouldn't necessarily have the ability to have recourse against them. So that's the sort of thinking behind it. They're basically playing by the same rules as the folks that are our liquor licensees.
Yeah, I believe the intent of paragraph I is to make it less competition for those restaurants that have liquor licenses. For example, if you did want to have a big party, you know, you, you could buy your own booze at the liquor store and bring it to a BYOB place, vice holding your party at a restaurant with a liquor license. And so it's kind of a non-compete thing. It makes it convenient for, and that's why they limit it to one table.
I can tell you that even though you don't really see a lot of BYOB, Matt Ameral, who owns Grapes and Grains, brings his own wine to Billy's. So Billy's has a liquor license, and they could do it, but, you know, he wants to have his own wine, so he'll, he'll do that. And I don't think, nothing in here would prohibit him from doing that or any of us, but it's the ones that are not licensees. I don't have a problem with taking out I.
I don't either.
Okay. And I think if...
No problem here with this.
If we hear from businesses that, I mean, we're not flush with large restaurants, so I don't foresee it being an issue, but if, if we heard from restaurants that it was a problem, that they did feel that this was hurting their advantage, I'd be able to putting it back in. But I think it's, it's pretty restrictive right out of the gate when we're only the second, only the second in the state, so...
Okay.
I'd move to amend striking I, section I, from the ordinance.
So I'm, I'm closing the public hearing.
Sorry.
And I believe there's been a motion to adopt the BYOB ordinance as presented, with the exception of Section 63-22, subsection I being deleted, and subsections J and K being renumbered appropriately.
Seconded.
So that motion was made by Jacob and the second by Steve. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions. The motion carries. So that is the public hearing. Before we set the agenda, it's been pointed out to me that we, I should have, we, although we appointed the player to be named later to these boards, we really should appoint Joy to the board that she was assigned to, or else she's just not going to go to any of those meetings. So I can't remember what those were.
Well, it was...
Library trustees.
I have it.
It was listed...
I listed it in the, it's in the town manager report.
Okay. On the town manager's memo.
I got it. I'll make a motion to appoint Joy Hearn to the United Veterans as liaison to the United Veterans Council, the Bristol County Water Authority, the ADHOC Budget Forecasting Committee, the Library Board of Trustees, and the Harbor Commission.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so for next meeting, the agenda will be the neighborhood restaurant we're going to look at, the drainage ordinance, and this is having to do with people, folks pumping out their basements, which is a tough, tough situation with sea level rise and a wet winter. Amending Chapter 148 Public Waters. Remind me what that is? I can't remember.
The harbor master is a contracted position.
Okay.
And so he shouldn't be a department head. It would move him under the Barrington Police Department where they used to be. I think it would provide for some efficiencies and get some engagement between those two organizations.
Okay.
It's also going to change some of the authorities, the way the ordinance was previous written. I could not overrule the harbor master. He could make his own decisions and leave them at that, and this will allow the chief of police to oversee him and to, you know, verify or overrule him if necessary.
Right, okay. And then we'll also be probably ready to talk about the pilot agreement at our next meeting, and also the remaining part of the fee and fine schedule, and hopefully have some bids on the...
Siding.
The siding. Anything else people want to add to the next agenda?
I think zoning board, third alternate, was something that...
Yeah.
People are interested in.
Okay, zoning board alternate. Did we, oh, we were going to reach out to zoning about that, to find out why they wanted it, because...
Right.
There's a, there's a cost to doing all these things and...
Right. That was Tom Craig. Yeah, I am. Should, do you want me to...
If you could ask him, and then we'll figure out whether we really need to do it, or is it a nice-to-have or is it a need-to-have?
Yeah. He's, I know what his answer is going to be, but I'm not sure that I would agree with it.
Yeah, part of it depends on the quorum issue. Have we had problems with the quorum issue? And if we haven't, why do we need alters?
I think we've had less problems with the zoning quorum than we had with planning.
Which is why we changed planning, right?
Right. I just think it might be a little more than, we need more work, more effort than is really necessary. But I can, I can ask him to, what?
Just kind of articulate the reasoning, yeah.
If you want, you can look at last month, the zoning board...
Report.
Report.
I was wondering why you didn't leave with everybody else.
Well, we can't really discuss it now, but...
We know that he asked for it.
Yeah. No, but she's saying the report has the attendance.
You were questioning about the attendance.
Sorry, wait.
You were asking about the attendance, and it would be at the top.
Right.
So we'll, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. Anything else? If there's nothing else, is there a motion to move into executive session in accordance with 4246-5A2, collective bargaining, police fire, and DPW and dispatchers, 4246-5A5, acquisition of property, and to discuss session minutes from February 4 for placement on the town council agenda for April 1, 2019?
So moved.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session. Thank you.
Good job.